I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, everybody. I motion to open the meeting, motion to open the board of education meeting. We'll open already? Go out of practice. Okay, right. We had a executive session prior to this for the purposes of discussing potential litigation and employment history of a particular person. And also, I just wanted to point out, as you can see, that the president of Board of Education is out of the country right now on a business trip, so he will be back hopefully at the next meeting, and that is why he will not be here tonight. So, I think that said, we're going to jump right in.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. So, I'm passing.
You have a prompter over there.
Really? Thinking, we got that I did this for you. Motion, can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Four zero. Now, I think, yes. I'm going to turn it over to Chris for the district update and the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you here on this chilly evening. I want to provide an update on our development of a potential bond for the school district that would envelop work on our fields as well as our school facilities. Very pleased to report on the great progress by the Fields Project Committee as well as the Board of Education Building and Ground Committee. Certainly been a busy meeting preparing the recommendations for the Board of Education. We have a special meeting scheduled for Monday, the 10th, at 7:00 PM in this room. We encourage as many folks in the community to attend as possible. On the 10th, the Fields Project Committee will present their recommendations to the Board of Education for the athletic field projects, which would include Mazarros Field, Ole Track, and East Field. On the next special meeting that we have scheduled, again, 7:00 PM in the campus presentation room, it is Thursday, the 13th, the Board will have continued dialogue about the Fields Project, and the Buildings and Ground Committee will present their recommendations. We are also planning for another meeting the following week on the 20th of March in this room, again, at 7:00 PM, and we're going to certainly have more dialogue about both of the presentations, and certainly are optimistic that the Board will be able to make some, begin making some decisions, but most importantly, some decisions related to our fields. So please join us. Again, I want to note that those meetings are the 10th, 13th, and 20th in this room with a start time of 7:00 PM. At the board meeting last week, I shared the news about our girls varsity basketball coach, Gina Marr, who had been nominated to compete in the USA Today Coach of the Year competition, and we are pleased to report that she won the state competition. She has now won in the regional competition where she was not the top vote getter. She received the fourth-most votes in the entire nation and earned an honorable mention spot to bring her into the final 10 for the entire nation. Gina, yeah, Gina received almost 120,000 votes in this last round.
Oh, my goodness.
And I have to tell you, the distance between her and others was amazing. So continue to support Coach, please. Voting, the links are on the website, our Facebook page, the athletics page, I think Artis put it on the athletics Facebook page. Share it with all your friends and neighbors, please get it out there to anyone that you know that's a fan of Irvington and Irvington basketball, and certainly a great individual and coach. This competition runs through next Wednesday, the 12th, and ends at noon. And I have to tell you, today maybe there was a huge push in the community to get votes, and she was down a half a percentage point and actually rallied to surpass the next person by over three points, just in the effort of people in the community today. And it was just email and Facebook messages that were going around that I kept getting copied on all day long. But we're certainly proud of Gina, and she deserves this recognition. So please support her and the girls' basketball program. On Tuesday evening, the 11th, there will be a PTSA general meeting that I'd like to encourage everyone to also attend. It'll be held in this room at 7:30 PM, and certainly budgets and the bond projects will be topics of conversation. So if you're interested in learning more, connecting with the PTSA, and having some personal dialogue, I would love to see you there, so please consider joining us. Reminder that the Spring Musical, Fiddler on the Roof, opens Friday, so come on out and support our students. And then finally, I want to report on our book club. We had our first Irvington book club last Thursday, and I want to thank Megan O'Donnell and the audience, our PTSA president, for not only helping to organize all this for me, but also opening up a beautiful home, and certainly being a great hostess and feeding everybody that was there. We had 20 people in attendance that night. Great, great dialogue around the book that we chose to read, which is How Children Succeed by Paul Tough. Megan had people reaching out to her even the day of the event that wanted to come, but hadn't read the book yet. So we're looking to do more of these in the future. Certainly, we're thinking about some plans for the fall, so we're always open to suggestions for books that anyone thinks would be a good read, that would be a connection about teaching and learning, raising children, any of the challenges that we may face with youngsters in our household. Great dialogue. What was really exciting wasn't the typical faces that you see in our community. So we had the opportunity to meet a lot of new folks, folks that have recently moved to the village. So it was exciting, a lot of great conversation. I went in, probably the teacher in me, with my lesson planned for the evening and prepared to utilize different protocols to facilitate discussion, and it really just turned into a bunch of small groups with free-form dialogue around the book, its concepts, and raising their children and educating their kids. We've received tremendous feedback from all of the participants, and when we debriefed at the end, everybody said how they're looking forward to doing it again in the future. So it was a great night, great dialogue with some good company and a wonderful hostess. So thank you, Megan.
What was the book again?
How Children Succeed by Paul Tough. Be glad to loan anyone my copy if they like. Written all over, but come on.
Worth more that way, right? This is the one about grit and all that?
Grit, yes. It talks about developing character in our youngsters, and the character kind of goes well beyond those typical character pillars that we speak of, of respect, responsibility. It gets into the internal fortitude of the individual and the level of dedication and, as John said, grit that they possess and how they work through difficult or trying times. And it's a great read, a light read, but very informative.
Okay. Thank you. Next up is comments from the community at this point. I mean, really on, I would think, the consent agenda, because we're going to go through the budget presentation, so it doesn't really make sense to take budget questions right now, but any comments from the community on anything on the consent agenda? Okay. Looking at the consent agenda, may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved. Wait, can I?
Yeah.
I just want to ask a couple of questions.
Yeah, I was just going to make the motion and then see if there are any comments, so.
Oh, I thought we could make the --
Any comments first?
I thought the motion involves --
Not approving it.
Oh, accepting is different from approving it?
Yes.
Oh.
If you have, you can do it two ways.
We can do it either way.
So you can ask questions now or by Robert's Rules of Order. Once you have a second on the table, you can then have discussion and questions. So you can do it before or after the second, before the resolution be approved to accept.
Whatever.
Okay. So why don't we do questions first? Any comments on any of the items, which is five through 9.7?
Yeah, I just have questions, I guess. Could, I don't know if this is either a Dr. Harrison or a Dr. Core. Just quickly explain what the lead evaluators are, the two items for approving and designating particular lead evaluators. I just want a little quick, short explanation of what that is.
So under the APPR regulations, there is requirement that those that evaluate others go through some required training that meets certain state standards. So these resolutions, and there are two of them, the first is lead evaluator principals. So this resolution just attests to the fact that I attained the necessary training to be able to evaluate our principals. And then there are lead evaluators of teachers, and that would be our administrative team that receive the required training to evaluate our teachers. And to achieve that, all of us attended a variety of workshops offered by Bosse throughout the school year.
So that's the, you know, basically, you know, that's the distinction is that this list of people have been trained in particular ways, and then, you know, we're just approving, you know, the naming of the people to the role which they've been trained.
The regulations around APPR require that on an annual basis, the Board of Education acknowledge that all of your evaluators that, for staff that are covered under APPR, have received training in those areas, and we all have certificates of completion that are on file in the Human Resources Office.
All right. Okay, that's, yeah, thanks. That's it?
Any other questions?
Nope.
I also just want to call out a special thank you to include in the consent agenda is donations from the PTSA, which this agenda totaled $12,791.07, which is a sizable amount. So, and it includes Circus Week, Buddy Benches, Preschool Carnival, Band Trip, and Ancient Grease Day. So I just want to thank the PTSA, that is incredibly generous and money that I know everyone in the district is thankful for. Okay. That said, motion to accept the, approve the consent agenda. So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Five zero.
Four zero.
Four zero. Bob's not here. Really out of it, so. Anyway, we're zipping through at a quarter to eight. We're ready to jump right into the budget presentation.
I won't object.
Really, they kind of hacked it by now.
Hey, you're running a smooth meeting. I've done it fifteen years.
I don't know how you do it.
Well, good evening, and thank you for being here, and it certainly is an important evening. So I hope that everybody here is ready to listen to the great plans that we have for our school district, and I hope the folks watching at home or that will be watching us online certainly will attend some of our future sessions, because the budget development process is one that is certainly very important. Not only does it have tremendous impacts on the finances in our community by establishing a tax levy, but it also outlines future opportunities for our children. Over the past two months, the administration, I look to my colleagues at last and those in the audience, and thank them for all their contributions and hard work which has brought us to today. During this period of time, we talked about our ideas, we shared our thinking and outlined some of our objectives for our students for the coming year. And in doing so, we outlined a number of proposals, a number of suggestions for the Board. We've had conversations, and items that we really thought aligned with what our expectations are for our school district, for our staff, and for our children, of course. And in doing so, we acknowledge different points here that I think are very important, things that many people would not argue it, that when we think about our children and preparing them for the future, we want them to have rigorous challenging learning experiences and curricula that will lead them on that path. We value and foster the professional development and growth, not only of every single staff member in the district, whether that is a teacher, an administrator, one of our support staff members, but bringing our families along on that journey with us. And that is our commitment that extends to workshops that we've been facilitating on district level, school level, the presentations that we provided in this very boardroom, and things like the book club that we facilitated last week. But we know we have to continue to find opportunities to promote the growth and interest of our children, and find different ways and vehicles to do so, but we can't forget our facilities. We have to think about the spaces in which our children learn, and make sure they're conducive to our programs, and make sure that they're comfortable, but also that we're being responsible and that we're maintaining the facilities. And these objectives are things that as educators, as educational leaders, we constantly focus on in our daily work, and when we think about looking to the future like a school district budget that we consider, which really align to a few of the district goals that I've pulled out, and looking at where we are in the district, what the Board's objectives are for us in the district, and having an instructional goal that calls for excellence in every classroom. Having a curriculum goal that promotes academic excellence, and having a rigorous curriculum that goes beyond mental standards. Having a focus on technology, a focus on guidance in preparing our children for the future, and continuing to enhance our communication around curriculum and teaching and learning, but also to think about our facilities, just as I outlined before. So when we're going through these processes, we always have to reflect on certain things and remind ourselves while we're here. And we have to think about every single one of our students every single day, and in doing so, it's just not an honor student, an AP student, or a special needs student, every child in between on that spectrum. So it doesn't have to be the smartest, as I said, the neediest, the most artistic, and the most athletic, but every single child in our school district. My belief in this, I think it's the district's commitment as well, certainly reflected in the proposal that I bring forth tonight. And in this proposal, we talk about balance. We certainly want to constantly enhance experience for our children, prepare them for the most successful future, and our budget presentation, my proposal to the Board of Education today, does just that. We expand educational opportunities for our children, and we do so at every single level. We're identifying opportunities not only to enrich and challenge, but to support our neediest of learners. We're valuing the arts, athletics, and are finding opportunities to engage kids in other types of activities. We certainly are going to support services that are in our schools, find ways to expand them. We're going to look at our infrastructure, how we can better support the operations of the school district, and of course, put some attention on our facilities. But in doing so, certainly it would sound ignorant if we didn't acknowledge the challenges that are before us, and they are not necessarily unique to Irvington. We all face challenges with pending contributions that are constantly rising. We think about health insurance and other benefit costs that far exceed New York State tax cap regulations. We think about the unknown costs associated with special education services, and when we look at this whole package, we have that ultimate responsibility of finding ways to contain tax increases for our residents and citizens. So as we begin to look at the proposal this evening, this proposal really is a culmination of discussions that have occurred over the last two months, when we began talking about projecting our needs, projecting where we might end up with expenses and revenues, and going department by department, area by area, discussing all the areas we have need, areas we want to expand or improve programs and opportunities for our children. And in this budget, we are looking at expanding programs. When we look at our elementary schools, we want to increase academic intervention services to our students with need. We also want to provide for a better foundation by implementing a program in kindergarten and first grade that will give us a systematic way of teaching spelling and phonics and foundations. At the secondary level, the focus is certainly just as targeted. We need to create a ninth-grade writing program, a program that's going to prepare our children to be not only successfully communicated writing in high school, but in all of their experiences beyond. We need to increase some intervention services for our students that need some support in English. We're also looking to add an additional technology course at the secondary level. In the middle school, we had conversation about the need to round out special ed services for some of our students by providing additional co-teacher that could support students in sixth grade social studies, seventh and eighth grade science. We want to identify opportunities to be flexible in our schedule, potentially offer additional electives, and to accommodate some scheduling nuances to enable our students to have access to more classes. And we want to make a commitment, an ongoing commitment to our guidance department to help them to be well-equipped to meet our students' needs by providing them with additional training and opportunity to enrich and better serve the students in our school community. When we talk about investments in the arts and student activities, we certainly believe in great partnerships that we have, PTSA and the Ed Foundation, but we need to do more as well. We have to continue to own those experiences for our children. And in doing so, we believe it's appropriate to increase our music department staffing to not only undo some of the reductions from prior years, but also to take advantage of the opportunity to provide our students with more individualized instruction. We want to restore the Main Street School musical, something that had been reduced a number of years ago and had been supported in recent years by the IED and recently the PTSA, but we need to ensure that program, that experience is there for our children moving forward for years to come. And we also want to consider the reinstatement of some clubs at the middle school to make sure that we're providing opportunity to enrich students, maybe in ways that we're not reaching them now. And in doing so, we certainly could broaden their horizons. So when we think about our student athletes, we can't leave them aside. We have to think about how we can better meet their needs. You know, there's a lot of concern today about student athlete health and safety. We can look to concussion issues that have been in the media and have impacted many of our student athletes, and we believe that by increasing athletic trainer services can certainly protect our students and make sure they're well-treated at time of an injury, also to help us identify any preventive measures that can be taken to secure their safety. We have a wonderful varsity winter track program. Many wonderful, talented athletes. We have a fabulous coach, but unfortunately, there have been reductions in the past. We currently have one coach who supervises over 50 student athletes. Our students deserve more attention and coaching than that, and really, from a pure supervision standpoint, I think we have to be realistic that there's a need for greater supervision for our student athletes, because if anyone's ever been at a track event, you can recognize how students are scattered all over the place. So not only do they need that supervision, but they need that coaching and guidance that a sports coach would bring with them. And we think about, again, restoring, again, another theme here, restoring middle school intramurals. When we think about our middle school students, we have good opportunities for them, but we have to think that this is a time of their lives, a time of their development, when they're at risk, and there's great opportunity for them to be connected in our school, whether that's after-school and activities or before-school and activities. There's a whole body of research that speaks that when children have first at-risk experiences, and they're typically directed before and after-school hours, this program would help us combat those statistics, and in doing so, provide opportunities for our children to be engaged in more athletic programs. So when we look to other services and other supports that we want to provide and that we believe are necessary, we want to think about overall operations in our schools, operations in our district. And we know that recess is a challenging time for our youngsters. Not only are they running and playing, we have to be concerned about their safety, but we also have concerns and responsibility for how children interact, and to make sure they're properly engaged and playing nicely with one another. And we believe there will be great benefit from increasing supervision during recess time at Dow's Lane by providing additional recess monitors. We also believe that supplemental training that we could provide them for a nominal amount of money at both Main Street and Dow's would have great benefits to our children's experience. We have had conversation along this budget journey where we talked about our needs in special education and the challenges that we regularly face. And in doing so, we have proposed that we add an assistant director of PPS, help us at many levels, not only being able to support our teachers, but being able to support our children, identifying opportunities for interventions, and create greater partnerships with our parents. It would also be relief on this front in helping with the observation of our teachers. We're looking to increase our leadership in technology. Not only are we looking to add a technology course, but we recognize that to be able to take the next steps in enhancing the use and instruction of technology in our schools, we need to have more leadership, more opportunity for someone to work side by side with our teachers, to expand their repertoire, introduce some skills and tools, but we can't do it with the staff that we have now. We currently have one coordinator of technology who also is the district CIO, who handles a massive amount of data for state reporting. I propose that we separate the two, and in doing so, we'll have that opportunity to continue to maintain the data as required, but we'll have that opportunity to have the leadership, to have someone that will go into the classrooms, work side by side with our teachers, that will be able to model and demonstrate how different technologies can be implemented, and it will really help us to roll out future technology plans. So before I reference infrastructure and school facilities, we have to maintain our commitment here. When we think about infrastructure, we often think about the facilities around us, we think about structures that are in place to help us operate, but one very important thing to consider is how we communicate with our community. Our communication is vital. We have a goal to enhance our communication, to have better outreach to our community, to better engage our community, and better inform them in ways that can help support not only the school district, but their children's education. So my proposal certainly includes increasing our focus on communication. I think it's critical that we also think of the infrastructure of governance of the school district. It certainly extends beyond the Board of Education and the leaders in this room tonight, but I think you have to think about the documents, the policies, the practices that are in place. And our policy manual is quite outdated at this point in time. It hasn't had a thorough review in approximately 10 years, and we think there's great benefit to reviewing that policy to make sure that our governance infrastructure is in place, the best guide to lead the district. We also think that there's need to purchase some furniture. We haven't had any major furniture purchases in the district in about 10 years, so that dates back to the construction, and that furniture was mainly placed in the high school on the Science Wing when the new spaces were added. And of course, we continue to perform necessary maintenance on our school facilities. But just as we're committed to growth and that we have a lot of lofty goals, and if anyone's keeping tabs at home or in the audience, you'll acknowledge that there's things that I have talked about in the past, that my colleagues have talked about in the past, that we presented as recommendations that didn't make it into the list that I've discussed tonight. And in doing so, we recognize that there needs to be a balance. We recognize that we can't have everything that we want. We recognize that we have to find ways to do with the resources that are available to us, and in doing so, we had to make some adjustments, and we had to shift our thinking. So when we're looking to where we are, moving forward from all those presentations, to think about all those needs, all those obligations and costs that we know we have, we acknowledge that we had to make some reductions. And in doing so, the administration has developed this list of approximately $500,000 worth of reductions. These are $500,000 worth of items that have been discussed along the way, and some additional items that we have to consider, some conversations that are difficult for us to have, and some that seem to be had every year, but need to be had once in a while. We've gone through and we've revisited and reevaluated what our needs are. We have recently learned that we have some requirements coming up that will result in cost savings. You'll see one reduction that I'm proposing that is a reduction in administrative professional development, and in saying that, I look directly to my colleagues. We're not revoking that opportunity. We're looking at reallocating funds. So we're not looking to add new money, we're looking for opportunities to use our money differently, so we're not going to ask for more money. There had been conversation about increasing arts and education funding, which is monies that we utilize with Bosse to bring additional programs into our schools. We're going to maintain where we are and not increase $15,000. In reviewing the additional sections that we proposed for the high school, we began to rethink how we need to do that, and we recognize that there's ways that we can deliver services more efficiently, and if we're looking at adding a potential section to a teacher's load, the challenge that may be associated with hiring a .2 in a given area. So rather than paying a .2 for one of the two additional sections, we believe it will result in a $7,000 stipend, the contractual stipend for one of the teachers, which, as you can see, saves some money. We had conversation about adding a chairperson for the special education department, but I think we need to take this one step at a time. And in doing so, we're proposing to be able to add a new assistant director of PPS, and I think we need to live with that experience for a period of time if the Board allows us to keep that position, and in doing so, if we have additional needs and concerns, let's have that conversation down the road. We've backed off some of our ambition in furniture replacement, as I said before. We're going to purchase two sets of classroom furniture. At the same time, we're reducing another two sets from our original proposal, and we're going to hold off on purchasing some cafeteria furniture. We talked about the idea of adding a special education crisis teaching assistant position and related training, which you can see a few lines down under Bosse's training. Certainly benefits that could be brought to our classroom, benefits that could be brought to our youngsters, but again, one step at a time. We've been fortunate to see some reductions We've been fortunate to see some reductions in our projected special education added district tuitions, which at this time could save us an additional $120,000. We can hold off on the purchasing of new library circulation software. What we have now may be a little outdated, but it still serves our needs. We've been able to work with Edutech, our I T consultant, to be able to reduce some of the costs of their contract. We also discussed the opportunity of expanding the services of community aid, but we're getting by at this point in time, and I think we need to consider that we're successful and continue to work with the resources that are available. We had conversation about expanding the modified basketball program at the middle school. We certainly engage a lot of students. The students are involved in a lot of different activities, but I think we can make do with the services that we have and to look at all the added costs associated with that. And when we look at the athletic clerical assistant position, we think that we can still maintain that position, but do so by reallocating staff across the district. So to the item that's at the bottom and deliberately at the bottom, it's a conversation that's been had many years over, talking about the need for bus monitors, with the exception of our students that require monitors for our I U P. When we look at this, we recognize it's an emotional subject, but it's not a required expenditure. It's a conversation that we've had year and year again, but once again, when we look at our surrounding communities, also them do not provide this service, so I think we have to consider this. So through our previous discussions, presentations that we've made, we've reduced almost $500,000. But tonight, in this discussion, I also introduced one new idea, and that idea was that of breaking out the responsibilities between the technology coordinator and the C I O responsibilities. And in doing so, I think we have a great plan before us and a plan where with the addition of a clerical staff, a data manager, a data assistant, at the cost of $70,000, we can achieve those objectives. We can have a separate C I O that manages the data, the backroom type of work, and we can have a technology coordinator that is visible, leading the technology charge in our district, helping us to implement plans that will be developed, helping us to introduce new ideas in our classroom. So in doing so, we realize a different level of reduction than I referenced a minute ago, one that's just in the ballpark of $430,000. So if we can step back for a second and look at what the impact is before us on the budget, you can see where we were, it's a shy of $57 million for the previously presented budget ideas and thinking, and to where we end up today with my presentation and the proposed budget that is $56,445,400. This represents a budget-to-budget increase of 4.39% and with a tax rate increase of just over 3.9%. You know, when we sit and look at that bottom figure there, we're under the tax cap by over $1.2 million. It's a very, very different discussion than we've had in the past, and one we will have more of this evening. But our conversation isn't really about tax cap, it's about taxation tonight and the level that the board is comfortable going to. So how did we get to this point? What do all these numbers look like? And these figures have been presented along the way, so I certainly will be brief. In doing so, I'd like to begin by talking about the projected revenue. When we look at certainly property taxes in our collection of highlights, you see the 3.89% that essentially is rolling forward from the previous slide. We see an increase in state of aid of almost 3%. But a couple of numbers that really should stand out to everybody is looking at the tuition. We are receiving more students than we had in the past from other districts that are attending our programs here in Irvington. Certainly, we point to our leadership and our staff in P P S and special education because that's where the children are coming and that is the types of programs that are drawing this level of attention. And certainly, you can see it has been advantageous on the revenue side. Some modest increases in sales tax revenues, B O S E's as well. B O S E's programs are thriving where they rent space in our schools. They have good programs, but a lot of the draw for their programs are the fact that they're in the Irvington schools. The folks from other communities are thrilled with the opportunity to have their children educated in Irvington, and they have needs that are constantly expanding, and we're able to accommodate some of those needs by providing some other flexible spaces for them. We shouldn't assume that we have empty classrooms that we're handing them. We're looking at how we can schedule creatively and flexibly, giving them different periods at different times. But in doing so, you're seeing a nice increase in that revenue. We're seeing some decreases in the other category. Other category, it's kind of a catch-all category, which includes Medicare monies that we receive from the government, but also interest earned. And we haven't been receiving as much interest as we have in past years, so Beverly really believes the Quad is the back down that number. But overall, we're seeing our revenues increase by 4.42%. On the other side of the story, though, there's some challenges, of course, when we're thinking about our expenditures. Salaries stand out, and the number of 4.55% is one that may jump out at you. Certainly don't want this to be looked at as a position where we're thinking that our employees are all getting four-and-a-half percent raises. Have to consider what's included in that figure. This budget presentation that I provided this evening provides for increases in over four staff members. There's additional stipends that are worked into that figure. And additionally, we brought on two instructional aides per student I U Ps throughout this school year that were not in that original 13, 14 budget. So obviously, those areas increased. The benefits, so we're looking at the healthcare for our employees, we're seeing increases of approximately 8%, which is about an industry standard at this point in time. When we look at the other category, again, it becomes a catch-all. We're seeing certain increases here, over 6%. They're being driven by a number of different factors, but one of them is B O S E's increases that we are committed to paying. Debt service, we see a reduction, a reduction that's a result of the board and Beverly's diligence in refinancing debt. Another item that stands out quite significantly is transportation, to see a drop of almost $173,000. And we owe kudos there to our transportation management with Archley and the shared services with the Quad villages, where we found layers and layers of efficiency. We've been able to have our students as joiners on other buses within our consortia that allows us to forego other private transportation services, primarily B O S E services that we've utilized in the past. And finally, you can see some mild increases that are projected for our utility costs. We project those figures utilizing guidance that we get from the Board of Utilities. So overall, we're seeing increases of approximately 4.39%.
Chris, can I just say that the transportation isn't the lion's share of that, the bus monitors? Just to be clear in terms of what was, because the bus monitors would be in that, right? That's 125?
No.
Bus monitors are not included?
But it's not in transportation? Okay, thank you.
No.
So that's real, that's a number that's?
We've isolated that. When you see those, those are our known transportation costs at this point in time.
Thank you, okay.
Are the bus monitors in one of these other rows or just not here at all?
Beverly, how would you?
No, the bus monitor decrease would be included in that.
It would be included in that as well?
Yeah.
My apologies.
In the transportation?
So in that?
Of 172?
Yes.
Yeah. So there's about a $50,000 reduction.
So the savings is $50,000.
Right.
Right.
My apologies.
But that's a significant savings in our transportation.
Yeah, doesn't minimize it.
No, it does not. And you can relate that to, essentially saving almost two full bus runs that we no longer have to pay for. Just a general overview, I think it's always nice to have a visual to look at, really the magnitude of the impact of salaries and benefits on the overall budget. And you can see that salaries and benefit costs account for over 72% of our budget. And when we break that down a little further and we look at our salaries, you can see how they have broken out as well. Looking at the large majority, obviously being instructional, followed by non-instructional, so we think of our support staff and custodians, and then 6% being administrators. So the tax calculations, obviously a very challenging, multi-step process, but a few things that I think are worth pointing to here that really drives that bottom line figure that you see here. When we look at the assessed growth factor, we're looking at the growth in assessments in our properties. Certainly a complicated factor. It's a figure that we do not calculate. It is a number that we receive directly from the state to plug into this formula. And we can see a near 5% growth in this area. And I have to say, it's among the highest, and I believe potentially the second highest in the state of New York. So that's looking at increases in local assessed properties, whether folks have renovated homes, put additions on their homes, where we've seen assessment growth. Another item to point to is C P I, when we're looking at the Consumer Pricing Index. When we talk about a 2% tax cap, generally speaking, that's the figure that people think of when we talk about rates of inflation and so on and so forth. That figure also drives many aspects of the formula, and that figure is not 2%, but 1.46%. Again, a figure that's provided by the state of New York. At the end of the day, you can see we have an allowable growth in our tax cap of 6.38%. So when we take a look at our budget in a point of comparison and guidance, this is a summary of the proposed budget, code by code, looking at what our proposed expenditures are, certain areas of growth, areas of reduction for a variety of different reasons on either side. But again, we're looking at a budget-to-budget growth of 4.39% and a tax rate increase of just over 3.9%, with a reminder that we're under cap by $1.2 million. So to consider the impact on you, consider the impact of our neighbors in Irvington and Terrytown, an illustration of what the anticipated tax rate impact on your personal taxes may be. And certainly, again, I want to say it's anticipated and estimate. We recognize that these numbers change. But you can see an illustration for a home valued at $250,000, seeing a $223 increase to a home valued at $1,894 increase, which is average assessed property, which is just over $750,000, I believe, across our community, seeing an increase of approximately $632. Just a quick illustration of some of the history, looking back over the past six years of tax increases for the Irvington School District. Certainly different years and trends. We look to last year where we acknowledged that there was a need to go over and override the cap, where we see larger increases of 5.7% in a budget-to-budget increase with a tax impact of 5.21%. But also looking back deeper, you're going to see years of negative growth or near 1% increases. Those were certainly lean years, and we recognize that that follows 2008, 2009, and recognize the challenges that we all face economically and how that impacted the school district. Today, we come forward with a presentation that includes tax growth, of course, but one that I think is certainly a balance, as I said before. One that provides for our students is also being mindful. I can tell you that our leadership team and I as your superintendent have no intent of trying to raise taxes to reach that cap. We recognize that there's opportunities to continue to expand opportunities, to continue to maintain our facilities and do so in a reasonable fashion. And thus, I present this budget for you tonight and one that I believe is academically and fiscally responsible. So as we move forward in this process, we acknowledge that we have another six weeks to that date when the board must adopt a budget, but we have, we need to have conversation tonight. The board needs to have dialogue about the content that I presented, the content that we've discussed over the past two months. We need to hear from our community members about their thoughts about taxation, about the programs that we've outlined in this budgetary initiative. But at the end of the night, I think we need to have some direction, the board to provide guidance to where you want to be on a budget increase, tax levy increase, and to provide me and my colleagues the opportunity to come up with the appropriate strategy to meet that number and to prioritize the programs that could best serve our children's needs. But before we get to that point, I certainly want to highlight what those next steps may be. There's a couple of meetings on the horizon where I'll be meeting with the community members. As I referenced earlier this evening, P T S A next Tuesday, the following week, the 17th, meeting with our general public and certain preschool parents to try to engage folks in this dialogue early on to make sure that the development of the programs and the school budget is in the horizon, even though their children may not be directly in the schools. But then on the 18th, I look forward to coming back to the board with any modifications or adjustments that you may request after tonight. So with that said, Mrs. Kern, I will sit down and gladly answer any questions that you may have and hear feedback from the board and the community.
Before I turn it over to the board, I just wanted to say a few words of clarification. Again, I think you did a great job of talking about the tax cap, but just from the board's perspective. I know last year, a lot of time was spent debating tax cap, do we go over, do we stay under? And I know that when it was initially created in Albany, you know, they kept throwing out, it was a 2% tax cap, a 2% tax cap. But I think as Bev and Chris have showed us, it's actually a complicated formula. And for all the reasons that they've outlined, our tax cap this year is over 6%. So I just think it's important to highlight to everyone that it almost, I think, at this point, the tax cap discussion about staying over or under is no longer relevant. I think it's really then becomes a more kind of typical conversation that a board usually has. I mean, I think clearly, we will be under the tax cap, so the vote will be a straight majority. And I think the question then becomes what we'll debate from now forward is going to be, what is the appropriate tax rate that, you know, we all feel is, you know, comfortable that the community can bear, that we can do good by our schools, but, you know, be very cost-efficient to the community? So I just wanted to clarify that. And hopefully now, I think we can maybe put the tax cap discussions behind us. If anyone has any questions, they could probably ask any of us, but I think we can get to the budget now, okay?
Sounds good.
I guess initially, I was thinking we'd turn it over to the board to see if we had any questions. And then I probably, after that, I'll turn it, I'll open it to the community, and then I'll probably come back to the board and see if we have any other comments after the community comments.
Just clarify your direction. I mean, I thought we're also being asked not only for questions, but, you know, feedback and our thoughts on what?
Yeah, comments.
Do you want to do that after we hear from the community or?
Well, I guess initially, it just seemed like, is there any, because is there any clarification points or anything that we as a board have? And then I'll open it up to the community.
Okay, and then maybe we can come back for more sort of responses and viewpoints on the budget.
Yeah.
Can I just ask one quick question, because Bev might have to pull out the calculator? So of the original things that you came up with, the new budgetary considerations, that spreadsheet that you shared with the board?
This one?
Correct. That was like $730,000.
$55,000. $726,000.
Right. So then we went through, you went through tonight and you subtracted out $500,000, but there's quite a few things in there that were in the budgetary considerations that you were then subtracting out again, you know, as upon further reflection. Would you mind just sort of netting those two out so you could say?
Give me a few minutes.
If you look at the things that you subtracted out tonight, what was the total of the things that you subtracted out tonight that were actually in the new budgetary considerations?
Okay.
Thank you. If you can do that while we're asking our questions.
Do we have a table anywhere on, I think you emailed one around, but do we have one in the presentation materials about what the price tags on those, on the remaining considerations is? The ones we're not taking out?
That's what she's doing right now. That's what, yeah.
Well, they were.
Well, I thought she's doing something slightly different, but.
They've been included in prior, as they've been included in the prior presentation.
Okay.
I was trying to get to a net number.
Yeah, no, I'm just interested in itemizing them.
That was, that's a spreadsheet that he already sent us.
Yeah, I know, but the public doesn't have that.
I think, if I may say, I think there's value in almost not having those before you, because I think there's value in that conversation about the focus of where you want to be from a point of taxation and set that as an objective. And I think it's the opportunity for the administration then to certainly come back and see how we think we can best serve the district with those needs. I acknowledge that there's opinion and priority in and around some of those objectives, but I think there's value for us to be able to have that conversation and think what we can do best with that one. If there is conversation around particular ones, we can share those numbers verbally, but they were not included in the presentation.
I mean, I guess I find it useful when we're talking about all these things to know what, you know, I mean, some things are $4,000, some are, you know, $100,000, and it's a different type of conversation in those situations. And some are once-off things, and some are things that we'd be committing to, you know, we're hiring somebody, so it's a much very different conversation. It's hard to talk about things without knowing that the dollars, at least in rough terms, what they are. what they are.
Want me to throw out any other random question?
Yeah, go ahead, because I have, I'm just going to have to figure out what my random questions are.
All right. I had another random question that can't be answered tonight, but would you mind giving us the five-year headcount history for employees in the district? You can do it FTE basis.
Can you clarify your question, please? Five-year headcount, so I should interpret that as?
FTEs for instruction, clerical, administrative, just total headcount.
I don't have that before me.
Oh, no, of course not. No, I said, that's why I said this, you'd have to do some research.
Yeah, but breaking it up by category?
Sure.
Sounds like a helpful thing, right?
Right. I wasn't expecting to answer that tonight.
And along the lines of FTEs, I had a question in high school. When you kind of revise the .4 FTE flexibility for the high school, and you made it one, half of it became a .2 FTE and half of it became a stipend. Would we be limited in terms of the subject matter or perhaps the teachers if we go in that direction? Yes?
To a certain degree. It will, because the variability there is. If we add it in an area where we would only need a .2 person, we're not going to hire a .2, we'll never find a .2 teacher, so that would be where we go back to the staff and we look for people. But if we hire it in an area where we currently have a part-time teacher?
Right.
Then the increase would be a full .2 of the salary. So that's, I think that's what you're asking, Robyn?
Well, I guess I'm also asking, are some teachers, you know, like specifically, you know, the ELA and the social studies, might they be capped at the number of students and not able to take on another stipend section? I mean, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if we'd limit ourselves to subjects because of that.
I would say yes and no. So I guess I'll give a couple of examples. Right now, in science and foreign language, we have part-time teachers. So if we added there, we would be looking to add an actual .2 full salary.
Right.
But in an area like social studies or English, it would be more than likely that it would be a .2 sixth-period class.
Okay.
Just to follow up on that, but so between those two options, we would, we would have, you know, the flex, the point of this is to get more flexibility, largely, I guess, because we've had difficulties with scheduling, right? Right? You know, to get more flexibility in that area, which is clearly valuable. We're not, we're not limiting ourselves by shifting from salary to, I just want to know that, I think.
Well, what we've done is, what we've done is we've given the opportunity for both to exist, one of each to exist
Okay.
by the way that we reduced it.
We would have had that anyway. We just would have had a little more flexibility because we could have gone whatever direction we needed. Now, we're seeing, most likely, we're limited that one of them has to be a stipend by the budget.
Yes, but I would also say that we feel pretty confident in terms of where we're looking for where there's probably going to have to be movement is, we probably may in fact need that full .2 salary, but probably the other areas would lend themselves to really an add-on and not being able to, you know, wanting to hire a .2 teacher.
Okay.
So the stipend.
So this is really budgeting based on a best estimate of what we'd likely want to do. And the benefit of a stipend, I guess, is really that for that person, you're already paying benefits, so you're not bearing the benefit costs that you look for another, another fraction of an FTE. Is that correct?
I looked at Bev when you say that.
And why is it cheaper to have a stipend rather than a salary person?
Oh, okay, so, so let me, okay.
And I'm guessing there's benefits, but I don't know the answer.
It's much cheaper. It's much cheaper.
The way that it works is that if we have a .6, and I'll use science, if we have a .6 science teacher and we add a science section, we would be increasing that teacher to be a .8 teacher.
Right.
But if we're just, if we're going to add a section, let's say in social studies, where we're not looking to hire a full teacher, we're giving them a sixth class, the cost of a sixth-period class is significantly lower than a .2.
There's no benefits on that.
That was my question. Okay, so the answer is benefits.
There's no load factor, right.
Okay, okay, it is benefits, all right, okay.
When you increase the FTE, you increase benefits.
You increase the benefits, but once they're full-time, once they're 1.0, their benefits don't go up if they, you know, do that extra section, which they do through a stipend.
The only thing that would go up would be social security and pension
Right.
because they're percentage-based.
Okay, but not health insurance and not whatever else? Health insurance, I guess, being the big ticket item. Okay.
Just to clarify something about what Robyn raised before. So English and social studies, currently, there's a limit in the caseload for the teachers. Now, how does that work? Can you pay an English or social studies teacher an extra period and go over that caseload? Okay.
Phil, I have your answer. Of the initial, the original $755,626 additions, we cut $210,528, which is 27.86% of the initial adjustments.
Wait, I'm sorry, say that percentage again?
Of the cuts of the $497,000 cuts, $286,990 are cuts that are not attributable to new programs, new additions.
Oh, is that, sorry?
$286,990.
Sorry, could you say that one more time? I thought I got it and then I.
$286,990 of the cuts are not attributable to new programs, new additions.
Oh.
For example, like we cut the tuition for one child and the bus monitors, and they're not, they were not on that initial list.
So another way of saying is that we have a net of $545 new and we're subtracting $287 from the old or existing.
Right.
Thank you.
Can I, just, I'm pretty sure I got it, but top line, when you're looking at the new proposed technology department, total clerical for that department would be .5 now?
It would be total cler, currently.
Not including the new position, I'm sorry.
Total clerical, not including the new position, it is currently 1.0. After the new position, it would be 1.5.
Clerical.
Clerical, because the new position is 1.
Is 1.0.
And then the .5 is an addition, I was thinking in addition to the new person, there'll be an additional .5 clerical in the technology department.
From an FTE standpoint?
Yeah.
The increase would be .5.
.5, okay.
Wait, say that again? I thought you were going down a half.
Not now.
So currently, if we look at the, and this is difficult to explain without anything illustrated. But if we're looking at the scenario, we currently have our CIO, Technology Coordinator. He has one full-time support staff member. We'd be looking at adding one full-time person, so you could say it's a 3.0. But what we've done is we've taken and reassigned some duties. The original question that was asked, rather than having two people support in that area, we had for the athletic department, a request for a .25 increase. The other half of that, the matching .25 already sits with one of the office secretaries in the school. We would reallocate that. So you would end up with a .5 of one of those two people in technology supporting athletics, 1.5 dedicated to technology.
A net, a net, how many FTE and clerical are we proposing?
One clerical.
One person?
Half, half more to athletic.
One person and we're going to shift duties around?
Right.
Okay. And that includes, right, all right. And this, the CIO position there, it's a very long list that you circulated to us of the different types of data, forms, submissions, it goes on and on, but that's essentially what this person would be doing full-time, is all sorts of different sort of numbers and submissions and forms.
Whether it's, everything ranging from student demographic data to test reporting data, there's a huge volume of reporting that's required for the state of New York. Most school districts have a dedicated individual that does that, and rather than it being someone that is, say, on a equivalence of a teacher's salary, as our current arrangement is, it's typically a data assistant or a data manager-type position.
Right.
Which I propose.
And what, and it's called CIO because that's kind of the legal requirement is that somebody holds that title?
And will this be a 12-month employee?
The clerk, the, the CIO would be 12.
Well, the.
Which, right, which is, I guess, brings me to another question, which I know we've talked about a little bit, but I know in the past, we've always talked about, should the technology person perhaps be a 12-month position? And I, and in order to do that, I understand that, that it would, we'd have to move into an administrator position. And, you know, I guess, thank you, I mean, I had asked you for the numbers, and I'm looking at the numbers, so it looks like in the budget, we've budgeted to work, looks like 100 hours of summertime is kind of what we budgeted for the current way it's set up. And I guess from just a pure numbers perspective, I think maybe it's not this year, maybe it's next year, but at some point, are we maybe thinking it makes sense from a, and this is all pure numbers budgeting perspective, to perhaps look at making the technology person a 12-month, which would have to mean then be an administrator position? Or is there thought that we'll be able to kind of maintain the cost and?
I think it would be something that we would evaluate based upon what the needs are. It's challenging to see what the specifics would be without having that opportunity to live with it. We believe that this would be a great start in providing that other layer of support and service. It may be something that we revisit down the road. I think we have concern about adding layers of administration, and I think we have to be cautious in getting to that next step. Also, I don't necessarily know that it would be a guarantee that if you went 12 months, that it would necessarily require it to be an administrative level position. I don't know if there's other arrangements that could be explored with that. But generally speaking, there's, there's opportunities to begin to explore that.
So I guess then my question is, if you think there are, I would be interested to know, if you don't think it has to be an administrative position, what the opportunities are to make it a 12-month period? Because it just seems to make sense if you have a technology person spearheading the district, that work does not stop with the school year. And it's all about efficiencies and how we're spending the district's resources efficiently. And I just think we need to start to consider, you know, if we're really committed to technology, do we, does it make sense then to think about moving there? And again, maybe not this year, but maybe at some point in the future. Should this be a 12-month position?
Well, it's four.
It depends, I guess, how much the model is that that person would really be an instructional support person as opposed to, you know, somebody running the technological infrastructure for the district.
Because my interpretation of the way that they structured this is that the role of the Director of Technology would become more focused on instruction.
Teacher.
Right. And less focused on the infrastructure of our school.
I think you can't completely divorce the two concepts because obviously there's interplay there, but we have edutech that truly manages the infrastructure on a day-to-day basis. But there's obviously, obvious interfacing that has to occur between the two. So it's not completely void of that. The primary responsibilities certainly are going to be focused when teachers and children are here, but there's obvious work that has to occur over the summer, which in the past has accounted for those additional days of the current individual hours.
Maybe it would be helpful, Chris, because you did provide us with the job descriptions, if you could actually put percentages against that, against these job descriptions compared to what we have now? Because right now, the job, the current job description also includes CIO, the CIO, the role of CIO, and that's going to take up quite a bit of the time, 30%, I would imagine, maybe even 40. And then there's a certain percentage that's going to be curriculum-focused or instruction-focused, and then there's going to be a certain percentage which is managing edutech and dealing with the infrastructure. That's how it exists today. So the new proposal would obviously, for the Director of Technology, would take out nearly all the CIO responsibilities, move that to the database manager position, new clerical position, and then that would expand the opportunity for instruction and still leave some part for managing. But just to have those percentages might be helpful?
And they're going to have to be estimates.
Of course.
Because obviously, that's going to evolve, and there's still going to be some required oversight and training of the data piece, but there's going to be dramatic, dramatic shifts in the.
Right. But for example, it might show that 80% is instructional, 20% is managing infrastructure, in which case the 12-month thing might not be as important as if you had a real Director of Technology who is responsible.
Well, I mean, actually, it sounds like they do a lot of their summer work for teachers over, for technology, they do a lot of training over the summer. So in fact, it does seem like they're, even though it's instructional, it's teacher professional development and it's curriculum development, so it seems to me like those pieces are going to happen, whether or not the kids are in school, especially in technology. So.
Rob, if I may clarify too, I think probably the most productive model of training that's going to happen for our teachers is going to be pushing training where the individual would go into a particular classroom and model a particular type of instruction or model of technology or to support a teacher implementing it. So where there is going to be a component during the summer, I would see the greatest investment that's going to come out of that level of training occurring while the teachers are present, and it's going to happen side by side in a classroom.
Right. But it's in the job description that you wrote that there's summer hours already for this summer. So we've already built that in for this year. Yeah. And there's one other piece that I think is really important for technology, because I think it's what we as parents and community members kind of see, it's like the face of technology, which is, you know, it's the headline and it's the e-school plus, it's what we use as parents for technology. And it's also, you know, our web presence. And I guess my question is, who do you envision responsible for that piece? Because I'm not clear on that based on the description.
I would see a lot of, some of the responsibility shifting over to this individual to be able to manage that type of content, because you see it as an instructional tool and being able to connect our parents and children with these, these resources. So I would see it as oversight, certainly constructing systems to manage it in more efficient ways than we do today. But I think that would fall into the balancing of those duties that Phil referenced before to see how much of that is day-to-day type things that can sit with clerical staff and how much would require some type of leadership over. But I think it's something that coupled with our other communications effort, that we'll be able to clean up what exists and to deliver a much more attractive product.
Well, I think it's too far. I mean, I think we all know that it's also, you know, ideally, we'd love to get all the teachers using the same tools and the same manner. And they're still clearly not consistent across the teachers. Some embrace it and some, you know, aren't as comfortable with it. And I think certainly as a goal, I would assume it's always been told to us that the goal is really to get all the teachers up there, all the teachers using it, so that, you know, you consistently know as a parent that if you need to find a homework assignment, it's going to be there versus, you know, some people aren't as comfortable with it. So that piece is really important to me, and, you know, I think need to be clear as to who's responsible for that ultimately.
Well, I think we're talking about two different things. I think one is creating an infrastructure in, for that to function and equipping people with skill to be able to do it.
Okay.
And then the other half of that is establishing expectations and accountability measures that would fall with leadership and leadership outside of technology.
Right.
So that would be me, Raina's position, building level, department-level leaders. That's where that type of expectation would have to be set. And that would be, that would be a journey to get there, but I understand the concern and the expectation that you're communicating.
Bev, I have a question for you. On slide 13, the projected revenue slide, what line reflects what we get back in aid for transportation?
That would be state aid.
The state aid?
Yeah.
Is there any way, and be honest if this is huge, to kind of give us what makes up that line?
State aid? Sure, I can do that in the next one.
Yeah, that'd be great. I have a few.
And just one, one other question, and you probably won't be able to answer it tonight. Do you know what our assessment growth factor was last year? Just out of curiosity?
You know, the tax cap?
Yeah.
It was 1. something.
1.01.
It was interesting that Bev and I were talking about trying to understand where this number comes from. I mean, it has to be either new construction of something, not, or it has to be an addition, I guess, to an existing building. It doesn't have to be a home, it could be. It could be a, a store or a hotel or something too.
Do we have hotels?
Yes, we do.
Do we have hotels?
Oh, several. Doubletree, Tarrytown House. They're all in, they're not in, they're Village of Irvington, but we have at least four, I think.
Right, right.
But, uh, whatever, anyway.
Do we have...
And, and, and so, and she's been trying to get information from the, the state controllers off without any, without any success. It's interesting, though, if you look at the other taxing jurisdictions, if you look at the Village of Irvington, the Village of Tarrytown, the Town of Greenberg, and some of the other school districts.
Tentico Hills also.
Yeah, but that's not in, that doesn't overlap with any of those, right. But, but, you know, you can kind of, Tarrytown has no growth, so we're probably not in the Tarrytown, this is probably not coming from the Tarrytown part of our district, because their tax, their growth factor is zero. And, um, and it's, it's, Village of Irvington has a little more than 1%, I think, between 1 and 2. And the Town of Greenberg has something. So it's probably mostly, it's probably partly in the Village of Irvington, which I'm guessing are additions or new construction. And it's probably also an unincorporated Greenberg. And, and, you know, I don't know if that's new commercial properties or what that is, or if it's new construct, new homes in East Irvington. Those are, some, some combination of those things is increasing our tax base. Even though I, also, just to clarify some confusion, our assessed value is actually, despite all this, our assessed value is falling. It didn't fall last year, though, right? So it's possible that there's a lag in this, this growth factor.
And interestingly enough, I think, to kind of just dovetail some of the complicating factors around valuation and taxes, there was an article in the New York Post, I think last Wednesday or Thursday, where it named in Irvington as like the best place to move to in Westchester. And in doing so, it talked about the average sale price of a home moving from, I think it was $750,000 in 2012 to the current of over $1.1 million.
Yeah.
Hard to figure it all out.
Small samples.
Do we, do I do? I'm sorry. A question about, if you and Bev have been talking about this, do you have any sense as to next year, where this number's going to fall?
Well, I, I kind of think we shouldn't assume we're going to get anything from this, but who knows?
I have, no.
That, that's one reason it would be nice to know where this is coming from. Is it, you know, is it, I don't know, is it? What, you know, and maybe, maybe, my only other thought is maybe the, the Greenberg assessor's office has some information they could give us on this. But, um, I have a few random questions. They're not random, they're, I guess, maybe they're random. Can you just explain the arts in education, what we're not doing, why we wanted to do something, and why we're deciding not to do it?
I'm going to pass that to one of the two of you, because you understand it better.
Well, I think Bev can, I mean, the, the numbers around it, I think Bev can explain better than I can. I can explain the instructional side, so.
Yeah.
But I think you probably want to understand the numbers.
The numbers, it was cut a number of years ago, since I've been here, and reallocated among the buildings. And there's been significant complaint among the buildings that there's not sufficient funding in arts and ed to do all the programs that they'd like. So I had tried to increase it by 15,000 this year, because that is the portion that we cover in one year's budget that we would get back in BOSI's aid the following year.
We get back 100% of it?
No, that portion of it.
What, what portion of it?
When, in arts and ed, um, so much is paid for, like PTSA, IEF, students pay for a program. And the difference, which is about 50%, well, I'll use that round figure, 50%, is covered through arts and ed. We build it into our budget one year, and that amount is then BOSI's aidable, and we get that amount back the following year.
The full amount.
Right, the full amount.
So why...
But you never get it in the same year.
Right. But why would we, I mean, given that kind of dynamic, why would we possibly not just want to figure out what the right amount is? If, if we're not paying for this, we're just borrowing it effectively for one year interest-free from...
Right. You're borrowing from one year, but it still increases your budget that year.
BOSI's borrowing, yeah, but then only for one year, right? And then it's, then it's flat, then it, it's a one-time, it's a one-time expense, right? And then next year, you get the revenue from BOSI, then you pay out for the following year. So you never have a net expense after that. So it, it seems kind of really penny wise, pound foolish not to have this. That's a...
There's an administrative thing. Come on.
Like, like, what, 15? So 15 of 15,000, quick.
I mean, it's small, but we were trying to just balance the budget.
Right, I, yeah, but I guess, you know, my, I think we have to be careful about doing, doing things only for the, for the optics of the current year budget that don't make sense longer term. And this might, this might be an area, I don't really even understand what arts and education is other than it is what it sounds like, but, but it, I just wonder whether that, you know, I'll just, I'll just throw that out there, I just wonder whether that's a sensible thing to do. The other thing I think would be helpful to have a little explanation on is, is the modified basketball. One of the other things. What, what's the downside of not having? We were talking about having two girls and two boys modified bas-- basically, would it be basically seventh and eighth graders or basically the, the, you know, would it be separating viability more or...
Seventh only, eighth only.
Okay, okay. And is that, is that common in other schools that we, we interact with or...
It was more common before the budget crisis, but we began to do it more seriously.
Sorry, I'm sorry. You come up to us, we hear you.
The seventh only and the eighth only were pure teams that were very common in schools. With the budget crisis, it, numbers of schools eliminated the seven, eight, and nine. And our numbers, you know, were showing that we were cutting the number of kids to merge into that one team. So the proposal was to go back to that. There still is a device that has schools playing in that seventh only and eighth only, so it would give more opportunities for kids.
Yeah, and, and we have to, we have to, you said we have to cut a lot of, it's both in the boys and the girls in order to make our programs fit now and...
Right. We have a number of kids at the modified level we would cut to make them for a manageable team of 15 on each level, instead of make the boys and the girls.
Yeah. And we also have to do cuts on the, in the high school level, we have a JV and, I know we have varsity. We hear all about those, but we have JV too.
Yeah, mainly the cuts are on the JV. The varsity level, we haven't had to make cuts.
Because kids will typically go play on JV if they're not going to play much for varsity.
You don't have the ability to play on varsity.
Yeah, or they're younger.
Boys and girls haven't had the modified, the JV cuts, but the boys have had the, the cuts on JV.
I see. I see. Okay. So I guess we have to probably hear from what people think about that, but that's helpful to know. On the bus monitors, is it, is it, do we have bus monitors for every bus run for every school now? Or is it just for the lower grades?
Rob?
For all of our schools.
All, all of our schools. And is it feasible to just do monitors for, say, the Dow's Lane buses and not for the other buses, for example?
We looked at that last year, and because we use the same buses, it's not really feasible, because if you had a monitor riding in the morning, and then they go over to the middle school, that monitor is now stuck at Dow's Lane, so there's no way to get them back. So you have to have, if you're using the same bus for the different runs, you have to have the same staff on that bus.
And it wouldn't be feasible to, to have people who have other jobs of some sort at Dow's Lane to also be monitors? Like, you know, I don't know, aides or something like that?
I think it would be impractical, because you're talking about extending someone's day from 7:00 in the morning to 5:00 at night, and then, you know, the challenges associated with transportation.
It's not, well, it's not 5:00 at night, is it?
I'm saying, at the scope of the two runs for buses and this...
One, well, yeah, one run for each, I'm just talking, just...
Oh, you mean...
I, I don't, I don't...
Desperate Dow's Lane.
I, I don't think that you would find our staff willing to do that. I think it would be...
Even if we paid them enough to do it?
Oh, yeah. And that brings up the potential liability because of the contracted buses and being district employees versus bus employees.
We have that conversation. It is, it's, it's, there's some issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway, if, if there's anything to research on that, it'd be helpful, you know, to do that. Is, and this is a Beverly question, as all, I think, most of the hard questions are tonight, but... Is it possible to split, get any split in our health insurance costs between the cost for our current employees and the cost for the retirees? This in part goes to the issue that the gentleman last week raised and...
You'd like the, the cost broken out?
Yes.
I can see if I can do that.
If it's po, if it's, you know, again, if it's, you know, depending on how much effort it is.
I get that, though. How, I'm just trying to make good use of our time and the task we have to perform.
We have no control over it.
Yeah, that, do, does that impact decision-making and discussion around the table for this year's budget?
I think it, it helps clarify costs, and it's an important part, part of our costs, and I think it's helpful to understand it.
Didn't you, someone shared with us, though, maybe it was in the last meeting, you, you did share the number of employees.
Correct.
Right. It's not the same exact thing as cost, I realize, but...
The number of employees and the number of retirees.
Exactly.
Total coverage.
Bev had shared that.
Right. So, but, yeah, it's not the same thing, but, yeah.
That there's 180 retired employees, 200 and...
Right. I think, from our bills, I think we can do it.
Right, okay.
I think we can do it.
If it's poss, if it's, you know, I, I think in general...
Sorry.
I think in general, it's something that is, it's just from a standpoint of, it's a major issue for the district financially. And I think in general, it's, from a standpoint of our budget transparency, we should have those numbers shown.
I'll see if I can get it done for next week.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be for next week. It doesn't directly affect, you know, any, any direct decision. But I do feel it's part of, should be part of our overall numbers. Okay, that's all the questions I have. I'll, I'll save my comments for later.
I had my question, so?
I have just a couple more. Can you just explain the furniture expense again and why we, I think you had said we're going to spend the money in the high school or in, in the campus replacing the furniture here as opposed to Dow's Lane or, if I remember that incorrectly, I may be...
Yeah, we had allocation for purchasing 1/3 of the furniture in the cafeteria here on the campus. So thinking about beginning a replacement cycle over three years. And then we also had budgeted, I'm trying to think, four class... Or four classroom sets of furniture. So we'd be postponing, initiating that replacement cycle. And rather than being as ambitious as we were and purchasing four sets of classroom furniture, we'd be purchasing two.
Right, because I see you're deleting 1/3 replacement of the cafeteria furniture. That's 25,000, delete classroom furniture, 12, and that would leave roughly 30,000 left in furniture.
Probably, yeah, there's some other equipment, obviously, in that code.
Right.
But that's, the difference is in that furniture.
But there were some things that we need to purchase. I think it was Main Street School, I could be wrong, but there's some cabinets that are in the hallways that the fire department told us we have to replace because they're not compliant. So there's some furniture needs.
With regard to the bus monitors, last year, then, I believe the number is $90,000, so this year it's 124. Is that, well, why is that?
That figure came directly from Joe Urbanowitz. I asked, I asked them the cost of the monitors other than special ed. And it would probably fluctuate, you know, due to their contracts, but how many their, you know, maybe their seniority. I, I don't know how he calculated that.
Right. Okay. So we're confident the 124 is accurate.
That's what the transportation department gave me. And that was probably in consultation with the contractor.
How many kids would be affected with the intramurals in terms of adding that back? Because you had made a great comment, I thought, in your presentation that, that having the intramurals helps kids in their sort of after-school focus. And I'm just wondering how many kids we would actually be helping.
Mr. Sosile, would you mind, if you're prepared to, speak to past experience potentially?
So right now, I can't say how many students would be affected here, given that we haven't run an intramural program since the year prior to my arrival in Irvington. I know it was quite popular at that time, but, but ultimately was not renewed. My past experience deals with my prior school, in which the intramural program ran four days a week and was, was exceedingly popular, you know, often having 25 to 30 students at a time. You know, and, and that would ebb and flow based on the sports season, based on the actual intramural activity at that point in time. But I would expect that, you know, depending on the structure that we put into place, depending on, on, you know, the, the facilities that we have available to us, we could have, we could have, you know, regular, regular attendance in that regard. The closest thing that I have to compare it to, and I, it may not be an exact comparison, but a couple of years ago, based on student interest, we started a ping pong club at the middle school. And the ping pong club regularly draws 35 students, you know, at 7:30 in the morning to come and play ping pong. So I, I, I would say that from an intramural standpoint, that would be my, my closest model at this point in time.
I think you could build on, use the, some of the data from Main Street, though. So Main Street has pretty high participation in intramurals, and it also runs it pretty early in the morning, 7, what, I'm, 7, 8:05.
Main Street starts later, so they can...
Right.
Yeah.
But the participation.
Oh, yeah, right, right. What would be, would you envision also doing this in the morning before school?
Uh, I, I think right now, that's probably the, the first option, mainly because that's when we're most likely to have the facilities available to us. I think after school, especially in the wintertime, you run into a very, very, you know, challenging schedule with regard to our, our gym facilities.
So maybe just to be clear, then, the benefit is not keeping idled children from getting into trouble. It's a different benefit, because...
I absolutely would say that, that...
Because they're not getting into trouble at 7 o'clock in the morning.
They're sleeping.
You cannot ignore them at this risk period.
You know, I don't know, I don't know that I would agree with that statement, actually. I think it's important to say that, you know, we have students who end up at school with nothing to do at 7:30, 7:45 in the morning. I, I walk into school at 7 o'clock, sometimes before that, and will sometimes see students in the lobby, middle school students, where school doesn't start until 8:30.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, yeah.
We have situations where we have children who are just unattended in their homes, whose parents work. We also have families that bring their children to school and drop them off well before the school day begins. And so they're left potentially unsupervised. It becomes a supervision issue for the staff, where David and Joyce are communicating with parents about concerns with their students, lack of engagement. And, you know, I, I don't want to say that it's a childcare program, but it actively engages a number of children that otherwise are, are not involved.
And if I could add one more, one more item there, it's not just the time of day, but it's, it's an additional connection to school. You know, and, and my experience, a, a healthy club and extracurricular program is valuable because of the opportunities that it provides and the different experiences that it gives kids. But it's, it's enormously valuable as a way in which students that can sometimes not be as connected as we'd want them to be, can develop another connection through another means with students that they might not spend as much time with, with a teacher that they might get to know better than they would ordinarily get to know. There, there's a lot of social, emotional benefits there that I think are, are hard to overestimate.
I believe you'll find studies that certainly will speak to layers of that, whether it's attendance, whether it's behavior, whether it's other opportunities that are introduced because of those relationships.
What, what is the cost of this, again?
4,500.
4,500.
Small.
Seems like a good cost benefit.
I didn't know what the, how many students it was touching. Thank you, but now I understand that much better. It was a good question and a good answer. Last question, just the recess monitors at Dow's Lane. What's the reason for those, again? Is that because of the, you know, what's different now that we need more recess monitors?
Yeah, I would say I'll start, and Randy, if you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone. As discussed, going back to the last board meeting, you know, we, we acknowledge the need to, in many ways, I think... need to, in many ways, I think, like Mr. Sotile explained, to have our kids engaged in, in positive activities. When we look at our recess times, typically younger kids require a little bit more supervision and attention to be able to engage them productively in activity, but when we look at, you know, this, the schoolyard at Dow's Lane, it's a, it's a large area and when you think about children and I think about when I'm in and out of my office all day long and look at where the children are playing, you need people to supervise and facilitate activities to engage our children, to monitor their behavior and their safety as they interact. Then you also have to consider the whole wide open space in and around the field that you need people to be able to make sure kids aren't wandering off, that people or somebody's neighborhood dog isn't wandering into the schoolyard as they're playing. So there's just concern that we think we could better, provide better opportunities and supervision for our kids, but besides that, I'll defer to Randy.
Certainly, I think that what we're talking about here are two additional monitors that would be there for the second and third grade. At the meeting last week, we talked about, we sort of clarified a little bit about who's responsible for the supervision of our students in kindergarten and first grade versus second and third grade and why this would be for second and third grade. So in second and third grade, we have lunch monitors who only work for those two hours and they supervise the cafeteria as well as the recess time for our students. They currently are at a ratio of about 20 students to one monitor. So when they're outside in that expansive field, if someone trips and falls and needs to be taken inside to the, to the nurse's office, that student-to-adult ratio changes. So for one piece of it, it's, it's about safety and making sure that we have adequate supervision outside when another monitor is consumed with something, has to go back inside, is involved in a conversation with students about something, that it provides enough supervision overall. We've also struggled with providing more opportunities for kids and in terms of structured activities and, and one of the areas of concern for parents is that students are restricted to that same area of, of the yard. They can't go up to the upper field to play soccer because of the supervision requirements down on the main playground area. They also haven't been able to go down to the basketball court, which is another area that we have available to us, but we can't send two monitors with some students down to the basketball court. At Main Street School, the way that they have lunch and recess is different because they do, they split their lunch and recess, so half the grade is outside at recess while half the grade is inside at lunch. At Dow's Lane, we have all six or seven sections outside at recess and inside at lunch together. One of the other plans for these two additional monitors is that we would also be able to, on, at this point, we're thinking two days a week, provide some respite for students that, that have sensory issues and have a difficult time in that large, unstructured environment. So we have, this would be an opportunity where we could have some students be inside in a structured environment while they're learning how to manage the, the unstructured time outside. During the lunch period, those additional monitors would, would also be able to provide some supervision for students for whom the cafeteria is overstimulating and who would benefit from being in a smaller breakout group.
Thank you. Last question, and this is a bit out of left field, but sometimes great ideas come from odd places and in this case, the odd place is my daughter, because I asked her how she was enjoying the, the ELA double period, did she find it to be fruitful, satisfying, that sort of thing, and she's in sixth grade. And, and she said, well, it'd be great if we had a writing code, a writing teacher and a reading teacher, meaning essentially making the kind of investment we're considering making in ninth grade. I know it's different than, because you're contemplating something different than that. And I guess my question is, have you ever thought about possibly making that investment specifically in the middle school so that there would be additional writing instruction in the middle school?
So I guess I would just need to clarify, additional writing, so the block at the middle school is similar to what the block of, that the kids have in fifth grade, for instance?
Right.
So we have additional writing for students who need academic intervention services, but no, we wouldn't invest in an additional writing course in sixth grade. I guess we'd really have to investigate and understand why that would be necessary or what that would look like, so, no.
So the thought has, again, it, it's not something you've considered because the writing, the, the, at that juncture, it's, it's not, the value in sort of bringing in extra writing help is.
But they're already getting, I guess, in other words, at the high school, our dilemma is that they only get the 42-minute period every day. So I get, we have it already at the middle school, they have the double block in sixth grade especially, they have a double block every day. In seventh grade and eighth grade, we were able to put in the block every other day. So I guess we wouldn't do it in sixth grade because in essence it already exists. We're looking to do it in ninth grade because it really doesn't exist.
Understand, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but it almost sounds like you're talking a little bit about the model we used to have with the literacy coaches. And I, and I know that they really worked with the teachers, but they also pushed into the classrooms. It almost sounds like that's a little bit of what your daughter might have been referring to, like, if we had the, and not suggesting we go back there, but it's just.
We can.
Like, you know, because if we have now these two extra blocks, it's, it's important that, you know, not only they have the time, but they also have the right tools and the right, you know.
That's what she was really.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess I would just also point out that all of our, our sixth grade ELA teachers were all, have all, were all elementary teachers, they, at both Dow's Lane and Main Street School. So the sixth grade experience really mirrors elementary experience. It's in seventh grade where we move to, where we begin that reduction. I will just say, years ago, before we had the block at the middle school, when we first implemented the block, some of the kids actually had a different reading teacher from their writing teacher, that it wasn't blocked the way that we, that it's blocked in, I mean, for the last 10 years. So, so it really does mimic an elementary model to allow for ample writing and reading and the integration.
Okay, thanks.
Um, just, again, just from a pure numbers perspective, I know Randy had mentioned the 20 to 1 ratio for kids to monitors and do we know what it is at Main Street School?
Me too, it's between 22 and 23.
Great. And then my other question is, you had the bullet point about the budget allows us to perform the necessary maintenance on school facilities. I, I just didn't have time to dig through again. Do, do we have a number that we can, I'm sure it's in there, I just haven't, is that 290?
That's fine.
But still, are the same numbers?
Yeah, still the same, about the same as last year.
It's 290. And have we, have we given any thought to, is it possible to possibly reduce that in this year, but then kind of set up an ongoing program moving forward that would then allow some of it to be paid over time instead of, or?
Well, these are separate projects, but.
There's a combination of things and there's things that we have set up in that way, such as the, the painting cycle that's been implemented. So when we look at painting, there's roughly $60,000 worth of painting in, in the budget and that's looking at common spaces, hallways, classrooms, and then the other things are project-based and looking at need across the district. So as Gary indicated, it's one of those that we're, we're keeping up with what we need to do at this point in time. The painting is one of those areas where you can be flexible, but I really, I, I'm cautious about, you know, we're making good strides. If you walk down the halls at Dow's Lane now compared to what it felt like a year ago before they were painted, there's a totally different vibe in the hallway and I think that's impactful on the students and helping create a whole culture of the school. So you think about, you have that same approach and you go through and you're painting classrooms and what that does, it just makes it a warmer, nicer.
No, I mean, the nature of my question is actually because I think we need to establish some minimal amount of maintenance on an ongoing basis and that we can't constantly push things off because some things are easy to push off until the point at which it's just a disaster. So I, I know we hadn't talked about that before, but I'm, I don't know.
In, in the presentation, the first one we did, which seems like 100 years ago. There was a detailed list of the projects that Gary was proposing to do. I don't have it with me, but it, it was presented at that meeting, so it's on the website and I think you'll just have.
I guess I'd just like to say, like, there is some ongoing maintenance that we could maybe kind of just know that every year it's in the budget and, and know that every year it's for maintenance things, not emergent, you know, in that way, hopefully in the long run, it'll save us money.
Painting he has on a cycle.
Yeah.
And a lot of the maintenance, like duck cleaning and duck work cleaning and, and all those he has on a cycle.
And we've implemented other, other things in the last, beginning with the current budget, too, that had never been done, and the idea of window wash, that we're getting our, our windows cleaned, that we have ratty mats that we're always chasing to, not.
Walk-off mats.
Yeah, walk-off mats, but the mats, when you enter the buildings, you see what they look like. So in there, we're, we've created a, a whole plan where we're actually, and it's not much money, more money at all, the idea that you actually have a company that comes in and cleans your mats, takes your mats out and brings in replacements every other week or something like that. So there's a lot of little things like that that are embedded in the budget.
Okay.
That I think tackles some of those issues.
Any other? Okay, at this point, I'll open it up to the community, audience, if anyone has any questions about the budget, the budget presentation.
Hi, Martha Leibowitz, 36 South Vera Street in Irvington. I guess I have one comment, which I'll try to keep brief, and then I have one question. My comment is about the bus monitors. You know, this was a big issue last year and, and you ended up putting it back in the budget because you felt like it wouldn't have passed otherwise because there was such an outcry from parents, particularly the K-33 parents, which I'm happy to hear John is concerned about as well. This is something that comes up year in and year out and while I know it is a big-ticket item and apparently it's a bigger ticket item this year, I'm just hoping we can find a way to continue this conversation because I, I feel like we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater with the younger kids. And I think even in the conversation tonight about adding monitors in Dow's Lane and the comments as to why we need them points to the fact that I think this conversation needs to continue for the younger children with the bus monitors. We're mentioning ratios on the playground of 20 to 1. On the bus, we have ratios of 65 to 1 and that 1 is driving a bus and I don't think can offer proper supervision for children who are entering kindergarten as young as four years old. And Dr. Harrison, you just said on the playground that we do need to monitor behavior and safety as the children interact and it's something that needs to happen on the bus as well. For many of these children, the bus ride is longer than the time out on, on the playground for recess. So that's my comment about the bus monitors. I'm sure the conversation will continue as the budget discussions continue. My question just has to do with the, the more training for the Dows and the Main Street School monitors. I was just wondering, I could hear more about what type of training you feel they need to benefit our kids. Thank you.
I'll ask Mr. Lichtenwalner to share.
So I, I think that there's quite a few things that, that I would put on that list and some of it has to do with some of the mandatory trainings that, that we provide all of our staff at the beginning of the year related to the dignity act and, and things like that. But we, we also want to expand their repertoire of skills and so, so for example, teachers who are working with students day in and day out and even our classroom aides who are working so much with our students and are observing our teachers are learning lots of hands-on tips and strategies to, to work well with, with children. Because our monitors work from the minute they arrive until the minute that they leave, there aren't really opportunities for them to, to be trained in those types of things. And as we, as we introduce new character education initiatives, the buddy benches, which the PTSA funded and was accepted by the board this evening, those are really particular things that we have to train the monitors and in how, how they should go about using them, how they should interact with students with them. And so this is just a, a small item that would allow for a little bit of additional training each month, just in, in terms of how to respond to a skinned knee on the playground, how to respond to a certain disagreement on the playground, an issue in the cafeteria. It's really to, to just address those types of, of little things and carve out time each month for us to do that.
Thank you, Randy.
Any other questions? No.
Hi, Esther Samra. I wanted to thank the administration for a really thoughtful budget. I think that the process this year has been so much more precise and I think that there's been a lot of attention paid to trying to restore some of the things that have been taken away from our schools in the last few years and I know that it must have taken a lot of work to identify them and I just want to express my appreciation and to the board for asking such good questions. So this simply reflects the fact that I now have only one child left. She's in high school, so that's what I am thinking about these days. So I guess I, is it okay to ask a question about something that is not in the budget? Is that okay? Okay. I'm curious about class size at the high school. This could be an anomaly, but my daughter, who's in ninth grade, I think, has three classes that have 30-plus kids in the classroom. And it could be just her issue, but she's finding it very hard to concentrate sometimes and that is really affecting her learning. She gets very distracted by what's going on around her. She's with very professional teachers who know how to deal with students, so it's not, it's not a matter that the teacher can't manage, but that there's simply so much going on. And I, and I'm wondering, I'm sure that, you know, David has done an analysis of, of our class sizes and I know, I remember a couple of years ago, three years ago, you know, we were told that our average class size at the high school was 18, but that really is a misleading way of looking at things because as anyone who has been at the high school knows, we have sometimes very small sections due to scheduling and very, and larger ones. So I guess my question is, how many classes do we have now that are 25-plus and what is the reason for it? Is it that because we cut so many of our electives three and four years ago, we now have this crunch in terms of scheduling and if that's not what it is, maybe could we look at what is causing this and maybe begin to address it a little bit? Because I assume this would then become a budget issue, but it really is a learning issue. You know, here's the other thing, I've sat in this room for a lot of years at budget time and when we start to think about class size, it always becomes this argument between parents who have children at the high school or parents who have children who are younger and saying, well, class size needs to be, you know, it can't be more than 21 or 22, you know, at Dow's Lane because it's so important. And then we kind of say, well, you could have 25-plus kids in a class at the high school, well, it doesn't matter because it's a different thing. But I think I'm beginning to think differently about that. And so, anyway, I'm throwing that out there. And then I just had a question about the, the STI-pended and the point 2. I know Robin was asking questions about that. So I think, I think I follow all of it, except, except sometimes it seems that having those, those 2.2 FTEs is useful because you don't know what your enrollment is going to be. So I guess I'm going to ask Raina and David, have, I guess you've thought about that, so you have a pretty good idea of what it's going to be like?
I, I, I'll answer that one, it's the easier of the two.
Yeah.
What we're, what we have built in right now is the flexibility to go either both ways. There's a point 2, that would be a, a sixth-period class, but still in the budget is a point 2 should we need to extend somebody beyond their, a part-time position. So the full point 2, I'm calling it. Does that make sense?
Right, so you've got one, you've got one full point 2, but then you have. Right, so you've got one, you've got one full .2, but then you have the STI-pended position. But sometimes in the past, we've needed the 2.2s, haven't we? We've used them.
Yes, it's just a matter of how we use them.
Okay, so you feel, okay, I'm not going to ask you any more questions about that. You feel comfortable that you can do, you can use the .2 and then the STI-pended?
But lots of conversations.
Okay, I'm sure you have.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I think maybe to expand on some of the conversations, and I'll ask David and Deb to jump in, but when we're looking at the class size issue, I think these additional sections provide flexibility that will provide some relief. Because if you think, in some cases, in the logistics of a big picture of scheduling, if you're able to break out one particular section at one point in the schedule, it has a chain reaction on other aspects of the schedule, because once you narrow kids in, it filters them down a certain path.
Right.
But there's, if I may, there's also other scheduling efficiency that when you're looking at the system built around how the school is scheduled, that's where leadership and guidance has been putting a lot of effort.
Okay.
And then by having a different approach here, that we anticipate some relief.
And just to slightly elaborate on that, I think that was one of the first things, one of the early things that Deb and I identified this year when we first really came on board together as an issue, and started looking at our master's schedule and the courses that we had, even just the simplest, how the courses are laid up. So quite honestly, Esther, for some of those classes that we can both identify that have over 20, 30 in them, there are other sections at times of the same course.
I know.
That are greatly reduced numbers. So the average number I think is important, but I guess over time, if you're not seeing those numbers come more towards the average and we see these gaps, then it's hard to imagine that the average then really is a significant number. Certainly, our goal this year is to target those averages and to try to figure out ways to align how our courses are set up throughout the day to maximize the ability to approach the average rather than to have these anomalies. Sometimes, especially in a small school, it can help to have that, especially when you run a singleton class. So I think there are a number of ways that we can look at, how we build our schedule, the courses that we offer, how we structure where they're going to be throughout the day, that should be the best way to address some of those needs. And then couple that with the flexibility that Raina talked about, and while one may be more on the .2 FTE versus this period, I think by having one on each side, it gives us a lot of flexibility to then.
Okay, I hope so. I guess I'm just going to compare, like my ninth grader compared to my daughter who's graduated college, right? She never had classes that were this large, and we've used that, you know, we've used that FTE before. I don't, am we using it this year? So I'm going to leave it in your hands. I know you're thinking about it. I guess the other thing is, you know, three or four years ago, when we really cut so much at the high school, I'm so grateful that you are beginning to restore some of those things, but the other thing that really still sticks in my throat is how many electives that, how many electives we cut. So again, we can't put everything in at once, I understand that, but that would be another thing that I would like to throw out there as something to think about in the future. Can we begin to restore a couple of electives back into the high school curriculum?
And can I just clarify that, Esther? So two things. We can do an analysis of where we are in terms of those numbers. I just wanted to point out that there's two, I think, pervasive issues that are creating the problem. One is that we've maintained a structure in our schedule and through the years. So rather than rebuild the schedule at some point, we had all those reductions and we were maintaining the same structure. So what Dave talks about is critical, because we haven't moved things necessarily in a way that might have accounted for some of the changes. But we can do an analysis of where we are and what those courses have been and what our high school numbers are and what we've reduced. Because I would also give you the example that we've also increased. So for instance, last year, this year, we put programming back in. Programming had not been running for several years because of a lack of course requests for, but, so I think there are electives that have come and gone. Part of it is because of student interest, and some of it was because of budget. So we can certainly look at that analysis and look at where we've, what electives we've run and what has gone away.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So that can, then we can have some data at least to look at.
Yeah, I think that, I think that could be really helpful.
Sure.
And this is something where I feel it's just, as a board member, it'd be nice to have more information about the, as part of this analysis, I mean, what are our class, well, what's, what should our goals be for class sizes for different subjects in high school?
Absolutely.
You know, I know, you know, language classes of close to 30 people make no sense, for example. And what are the electives that we have and what might we have? I mean, all of this is worth considering, because it's, obviously for high school, it's a much more complicated situation than it is for the other schools.
I also like to think, because I know it's happened in the past, that if when we actually get to that point, if for whatever reason, you know, the way the budget is set up can't make it work, and, you know, we really need to do another FTE, then normally with the discussion that's had and the decision's made, you know, the administration and the board, so I'm, you know, I'm hoping that even if it's in the budget, because, you know, if the realities end up coming, being different, then it still isn't a definitive no. Like, you know, if it's important for the kids, hopefully we can figure out a way to make that work.
And it's fair to say that there've been a lot of people raising this issue this year.
Hi, Allison, Wagga Spack, 3 Emery Road. I just also would like to commend the administration for a great budget. I think that there's a lot of meat and things being added back in that will enhance students at all levels of the community, so happy to see that. And thank you to the board as well for your questions. I just had two questions. One was, to John's point, when all of you were talking about how that calculation happens with the tax cap and how we're at a situation now where we actually aren't going to use our cap this year. Is there a way to preserve that extra cap that we're not using for future budgets in any way, shape, or form?
We're allowed to carry some carryover, but I'm not sure how much, so we would have to look into that.
I just think that would be helpful information. As we're trying to figure out, have some idea of what we can expect next year, and you know, it's hard to know, but if we know there's some opportunity.
Right. They change the law every year, so this year they changed the law on some of the tax cap criteria, so even if I was to project something for next year now, it's not set in stone.
So even if it's the law for the year that you don't use it, they could change it retroactively for next year? Is that what you're saying?
Right, because it would be the amount brought forward for next year, so, but we'll get some more information on that.
There is, current tax cap provides for some carryover.
Right.
But we'll figure out what those specifics look like.
Yeah, I didn't know that at all, so it's helpful to know. So that would mean that if we, you know, didn't use the entire tax, not that we're planning to, but if we fell short of the tax cap this year, that would actually somehow raise our tax cap next year.
And then the other question I had, I was just reviewing the presentation about the special ed on February 11th, I think was the meeting, and you laid out considerations for this assistant director of pupil personnel, is that what it is? PPS? And in here, it says that that person, by eliminating another position, would be a $7,000 expense. Is that still the case? Or $6,900?
That's a savings.
No, she said the director.
She's talking about the chairperson, I think.
So we're talking, there's two different things, Allison. One included the budget is an assistant director of PPS, and how we're able to apply federal grant monies towards it, that would result in a $6,900 savings actually, because some current district funds could be replaced by federal grant money. Those would be some offsetting costs. There was also discussion at February 11th about adding a chairperson, which would be like the equivalent of a social studies chair or a math department chair. That was one of the discussions we had, but in my presentation tonight, I removed that from consideration.
Okay, so I guess my question is, are you saying that that person that we want to add, that direct assistant director, would not cost the district anything in terms of a salary? We would get it funded through a grant, a federal grant? Is that?
I wouldn't say it wouldn't cost us anything, but.
Well, we'll have to pay benefits and pension and all of that, I assume.
It would be a reallocation of existing positions. So when you take the existing, we're not creating a whole 1.0 FTE. What we'd actually be doing is realigning and reassigning staff potentially within the PPS department. And in doing so, we would take an existing position that falls under the teaching contract, move it to the administrative ranks, and in doing so, expand the scope of responsibilities. With that shift, even though we're making that movement to administrative ranks, because of the new titled position, we could apply grant money to it, which ultimately saves us money. So a couple benefits, more support, more leadership, and then it actually saves us a few dollars.
A win-win.
Only every decision was that clear-cut. More questions? 74 Roundabout Road, Tarrytown. And I'd also like to thank the administration and the board. This is such a transparent budget. I feel we're all well-informed, and thank you for all your efforts. Just one question on the revenue we receive for out-of-district students. I think it's going up to 800,000 proposed on the budget. Do we have any sense of what the, are we making a profit? You know, what the net income or net loss might be from those students coming into district?
That would be very difficult. Go ahead.
The way we look at it is that we accept students on a tuition basis into one of our existing programs. We've already hired the teacher, we've already hired the support staff for that classroom, bought virtually all of the materials and furniture and everything else that's been spent for that program. So while we accept students on a tuition basis from another district, they are programs that can, we're spending annually, we're actually are putting in a public, public funding program.
Right, so these are all sunk costs. And so the increase from last year to this year really would be, for the most part, a benefit for the district.
Any more questions? Okay, I guess at this point, it comes back to the board to begin to have the discussions to give the administration some more clear direction as to where we want to go. Who wants to start?
I'll start, if you want. I loved a lot of these additions, but of course, we can't have everything that we want. I thought a lot of these additions added, whether it was extracurricular or educationally, it added a lot to our students, and I felt the first time we've really done this in a long time. And last year I thought it was a healthy budget, and this year I find to be an enriching budget. But we still have to cut and make some choices, I guess. My advice is I would like to see some of the more academic enriching cuts, I mean, additions, rather than some of the other ones. I have a little, I have two concerns on your cut list that you eliminated in special ed, the crisis TA and the BOSI's training position. The crisis TA, I'm a little concerned about, because I feel like, given this year and what's been going on at the lower grades, I find that this position is pretty necessary. But, I mean, ultimately, it's, you know, your call, Randy's call, with Scott and you guys making the best judgment on the cuts. But that one was a particular red flag for me. Does that help in terms of guidance? And don't touch B&amp;G. We've made a great progress there.
I mean, I'll just follow up on Maria, because I kind of, I have similar concerns about the crisis TA, and I feel like it's, it might be painful to put it in the budget because it's expensive and it has a load factor with benefits, but at the same point, when things get bad, they get bad quickly, and sometimes we end up spending a lot of money at that moment to make things better, where in the long run, this might have been a better use of our funds. It just, it just happens to be on the budget, so, you know, we're looking for places to save. And I also know that it, it also, it's always been a concern that the teachers, the other kids in the classroom move out. So it's not only, to me, it's not only a benefit to just the children and the teachers who need, you know, the teachers who need the training will get it from the consultant. But for the other kids in the classroom who are dealing with, you know, a child who maybe is struggling, and then it becomes a whole classroom issue, it's not just a child issue. So if you look at who this, a person like this might impact, they ultimately could impact classrooms of kids and not just a handful of kids. So I think that becomes really important as we look at it. And I guess the same as Maria said, I tend to want to look at more of the academic things, because I know you do too, and the one thing that I still kind of struggle with is the trainer, the athletic trainer. And I know clearly safety isn't the utmost important. I just, again, it's how many kids are we going to be able to affect with that money? And, you know, I'd rather be, I'd rather try to affect a wider range of kids, and preferably in the classroom, than a smaller number of kids perhaps on the playing field. And that's not to downplay safety, of course, I'd love to do all of this if we could, but that's kind of where I'm coming from right now, so.
Can I go? So I think, looking at big picture, we have a number of costs which are required, they're not things that we can easily change. Obviously, the employee benefits, the $900,000 that's associated with that. The salary increase, there's a substantial portion that's just related to contracts, so that's not something that we can do much about either. And I think you've done an excellent job of really going through a lot of the other items and sort of considering the pluses and minuses. So I didn't say thank you earlier, I will say thank you now for doing that. And I think actually where this comes out is, in terms of a number with a 3.94% tax rate increase, that strikes me as being sort of in the ballpark. That's my general feeling. It would be great if it were lower, but I think that would require a budget-to-budget increase to be lower than 4.39%. And given the fact that all of those costs that I just described that are more or less baked into our budget, I think in our earlier discussions, we said that was roughly 4%. So we have a very small increase on top of the costs that are kind of baked in costs. The one thing that I was a little bit, you know, concerned about as I was thinking about the big picture was the headcount, in the sense that adding four more employees to the district is an important decision, especially in terms of what we hired, the additional people we hired last year. Because when we bring on more employees, we are bringing on not just more support to our students, but we're bringing on a cost base, and we tend not to reduce that cost base unless we have dramatically difficult economic conditions like we had in '08 and '09. And so I think we should just be really mindful of adding four more employees to the district. And I guess my feeling, you know, would be somewhat modified, would be offset if I knew that in fact, we're just bringing our headcount back to where we were at some point, like in '08. So that's why I was asking for that longer-term view, because, you know, four additional may just get us back to a place where we're still below where we were in '08.
And I think we could probably pull some comparative data from this same process a year ago, and I think it would have been the preceding presentation, or the, well, actually maybe the one that followed this a year ago, where I think we actually analyzed that we had. But I think we actually analyzed that we had like a reduction of 38.9 faculty members or staff members-
Right, the numbers were quite significant, yeah.
So, as we do that analysis, we'll kind of throw that in as a footnote as well.
Yep. I actually agree with Maria and Robin about the TA position for special ed crisis position, for the reasons they said. And I also had questions about the trainer position as well. And it just seems that those two numbers actually kind of offset one another, meaning that the trainer position, which is still in the budget, is 30,000, and this is 30,000. So there's some symmetry there.
If I could just make one point of clarity, and it probably shouldn't be separated on the screen right now, but if you look at where the TA is listed, if you go down a couple lines, the BOSI's teacher training position-
Yeah.
-that $35,000 associated with that is coupled with the crisis TA. So in reality, it's 65,000. Scott, if I recall, that we're looking at that 35,000 as being costs that will be dramatically reduced moving forward. That was year-one training that was going to be greater?
Year-one, although both are relatively low.
The initial outline is greater than that, but I just want to make that-
Yeah, thanks, yeah.
Well, the total is 77,000 with employee benefits.
That was pointing out employee benefits, so 77,000 for total.
And I think we're going to have a lot of fruitful discussion, as we did last year, about the bus monitors, just because-
Fruitful?
Fruitful, meaningful, meaningful better word, just because-
That meant to be ironic.
Because $124,000 is a lot of money, but clearly, there's a lot of concern within the community that we should have more discussion about eliminating that cost. I don't have an opinion on it right now. Fortunately, I don't have to have an opinion on it right now, but I want to hear more feedback from the community members.
Yeah, I have, I noticed, Allison, you're at night-
Sorry, I had another question, but I can wait till you-
I have a long-
Okay.
I have a lot to say, so you should probably go first, rather than stand there for another half hour.
Thank you. Well, Phil, I can give you my two cents on the bus monitors. I happen to, my son's in kindergarten this year, and I happen to have a great bus driver who I notice gets up with every child, makes sure they're strapped in. I'm not exactly sure what the monitor does, sorry Martha. But for my particular bus situation, although I do have concerns about a driver being responsible for all of those children and what they're doing in the back of the bus, I have to say that my particular bus situation, he's, seems 70 million times more competent than the aide that we have on the bus, so he's doing the job. My two cents. But anyway, my question was, I'm sure that this has already been figured out in your minds, but there are three teachers retiring at Dow's Lane, so when we're talking about adding four teachers, are we going to be, I would assume we're going to be shifting current teachers to accommodate those positions, or maybe not? Maybe we're hiring, and that's just three more positions that could be coming into the district that we would be paying for long, no?
I think the answer isn't very clean and simple. So, yes, we have actually four people retiring district-wide, but we also have essentially a callback list from reductions, going back to all those staffing reductions over the years.
Right.
So we have to bring back some of those folks. And some of those folks are in the process of accepting jobs potentially. And then we, for the other vacancies that we've identified, they are positions that we have to fill, because they are classroom teaching positions. So we've budgeted what we think the marketable salary is, and we've realized some breakage between the higher retiring salaries and the new folks, or the folks coming back from the hell list that will be replacing them. So we've already factored it.
So, in our cost for teaching, I forgot what that line item was, those costs are already included in there?
Yeah, it's all accounted for.
Got it.
Just have to, one thing on the bus monitors, I just, I have a newfound appreciation for the bus driver I had when I was in first and second grade. We had no, I never would have dreamed to have him on. It was a suburban district, and the bus went on for a long time. But he was the meanest guy you could ever imagine. We were all scared of him. And, you know, it didn't take much to get Hank mad. And it worked, you didn't need a busman. We kept, we were all kept in line, you know, it was great. Now, it was, you know, a more genteel time, of course, but still. So, maybe we just need to hire meaner drivers and we'll be fine.
Not on so low.
Mean streets. So, you know, I guess I look at things somewhat, is that going to be better? I don't know if it's me or what, I mean, if I could learn how to talk into these things, I might do better.
Let me do a question.
I have no questions, I have statements. You know, I think it's the volume of my questions, not the quantity, anyway. You know, I think where I look at this is, if we're going to add a spending item, I want to, you know, I think we need to be asking for all of these, and is, are, does that spending item lead to a substantial improvement in the quality of our education or the services? And that could be in a whole bunch of different areas, right? But I think we need to really feel confident that any item that we're talking about does that. I feel good about some of these, I feel not so good about some of the others. I feel like in some cases, maybe the case just hasn't been made yet, to my level of comfort. And then I think if we're going to be adding spending, we also have to really also be asking, are there areas where we're spending money that we, you know, could cut without having much impact on the quality of education or services? And I don't feel like that's a discussion we've really had. And maybe the answer is, there isn't anything anywhere in this district that we can't comfortably cut without really biting into what we're doing. But I'm just not confident that that's true. The other perspective, we're benefiting on the tax cap, we're benefiting this year from some sort of mysterious windfall. This 1.04, whatever it is, assessable base increase. But next year, I think we also need to be asking, what's going to happen next year? I think we should not presume, many districts have no tax base increase, including, for example, I think Dobbs Ferry and Tarrytown, near us.
Just to correct, Tarrytown is 1.0321, the district. They get it?
Oh, no, the district, I know, but that seems to be sleep, but not the village, I'm talking, I'm sorry, yeah, the village, you're right, the village of Tarrytown, obviously. Anyway, so, but there are plenty of jurisdictions that have none.
Right.
If you don't have building and additions, you're not going to have anything. And it's kind of mysterious why we had it. Although there is, anyway. The point is, we could face a very, very tight tax cap next year, in which case, if we add a bunch of things this year that are ongoing programs or positions, we may well, we may well end up having to talk about cutting them or something else next year. And I think we should be very cautious about doing that. And it's especially going to be an issue, the governor is now talking about penalizing taxpayers in districts that go over the tax cap. It's not just a question anymore, it might no longer be a question of just getting the voters to approve it, and then that's fine, it's really up to the voters. But we're now talking about people actually paying a penalty through not being able to deduct, I meant to look at how these taxes work, but not being able to deduct state property taxes on the income taxes, or something like that. But that may be coming down the pike, that will make it harder for us to exceed the tax cap. So I think we need to be careful, we can't, we can't just treat this as a windfall that we can use for whatever we, you know, whatever seems like a good idea, unless we're really confident that it really makes sense, and we're really getting a, you know, we're really spending the money in the right way. So given that, I mean, we're also looking at a year, and this will be true next year too, where we have big increases in our labor costs because of how our contracts were structured, which basically deferred our labor cost increases till this year and next year. And that's unfortunate, but it's true. And it makes it, you know, we're already, we're paying a lot more for what we're already doing this year because of that. And we're going to be paying still more again next year for the same services. So I think we, you know, that kind of increases the level of caution I would have about what we add, especially if we have to take it back next year. So I guess the bottom line is, I think we need to be, set the bar high for adding new spending. And if there are really are priorities, we also should be talking about possible reductions in other areas. The other thing is, we have this tax cap to use, and so as not to, one thing we, I think we should consider doing, because these are one-off things that it would make sense to do sooner rather than later, are any kind of maintenance projects or capital spending that we can be taking out, instead of bonding, we can be putting on our budget. Those are things that it may well make sense to put in and do now, put in our current budget, even the things that our friends in the Building and Grounds Committee are working on now. So put those in our budget, that's, those are one-off things that if we decide they're worth spending money on, why not put them in our budget, rather than bond them and have to pay them over time? And then we'll have a little more flexibility next year about what we spend money on, because we'll be at that higher base, and we can use it if we want to use it. So I think we ought to seriously consider that. And there may be other, and then that's why I keep harping on this maintenance, you know, what are the maintenance, what are the capital projects? Because instead of, it might make sense to do a lot more this year, more painting, more whatever, this year.
That's not enough.
No, I know, but it is in stuff that Chris, but it's also stuff that, you know, you paint, you couldn't accelerate some, maybe painting's not the best example of that, because painting has to be done on a recurring basis. But there may be other things that are not so recurring as painting. So I just think we ought to, I think that's something that you ought to look at more. Because I really think it's critical not to just look at this as a one-year budget and not think about what's going on next year. So those are the broad comments I have. And a couple of, one other presentational comment I'd like to make is, and this may have to do with how we budget, but I would like to, if we can, find a way to be more transparent about how we spend and budget for tax certs, than what we're doing. What we're doing now is, we're basically taking money that we budgeted for other things, but we have a fund, we did have a bond, or whatever it was, and we put some money into a tax reserve. But also, our practice over however many years has been to take all the money we budget for other things that we don't spend by the end of the year, and then use a good chunk of that for tax certs. And so we're not really transparently budgeting for the tax certs that we're likely to have. And I wonder whether there isn't a, you know, that, along with the health insurance issue, that's another area where the district has big obligations, and I would feel like it would be great to have more transparency. I don't think it speaks to necessarily doing any, making any different decisions on how we're spending our money, but I think the, but the presentation, I think, it'd be great if it were more transparent, and maybe it involves creating, I don't know if we can create a budget category for tax certs, or, like, the village does that, for example.
You would, it would be a line item in the budget, transfer to the tax reserve? And then again, like I explained, any time you use that money for the tax cert reserve, the board has to approve it?
Yeah. And may, or is it also, the other thing the village does that we don't do, is it has a big budget item for, it calls contingencies, that it just uses for whatever comes up?
We're not allowed to do that.
Municipalities are, and school districts aren't, is that-
Well, I know that we don't have a category for that.
Okay, and we're not allowed to-
In the State Education Department, we're not allowed.
Okay, okay. That's good to know, because it does give them more transparency, but also more flexibility than I guess we have. Okay, a few specific comments on budget items. I'm, I really appreciate the motivation behind the writing program, but I'm, I have some concerns about that as a concept at this point. I'm, for example, I'm not, it's not clear to me that adding more class time in ninth graders' schedule is necessarily the best way to go. I feel like our current writing instruction is, I think this is true both in the middle school and my more limited experience with the high, and I'm speaking as a parent here, my more limited experience with the high school is not what it should be. And, you know, we're not, and we know that we're getting feedback from graduating seniors going to college, that they're not at the point where they need to be in writing. And I'm really not convinced that this program, as it's structured, is going to solve our problem, or even do much that's really very positive for it. I also have, you know, a smaller issue, but the problem with not having, not separating honors and non-honors kids, if there were such a program, but I think that that's a, that's not a budgetary issue. But it does speak to the flexibility one would have with scheduling, I think, if you wanted it that way. On music, I mean, it kind of makes sense to add that, what is it, .4 position for music. But I think it would be great if we could take a broader look at our performing arts, which is also, I guess, drama, and ask, I know that some years ago, drama was cut fairly substantially, and we have music. And I think we ought to look at that thing a little more holistically than we have, and really ask if we're allocating our money, our performing arts money, in the right way. And this is both, I guess, it's mainly middle school and high school, but it's Main Street School, I guess, too. So, in math support, the math support we're talking about for Dow's Lane, we removed this year the, what Christine Rosner had done for enrichment in Dow's Lane and Main Street School. And I know we got at least one request to put that enrichment money back in some way. And we, you know, we were assured we were going to, you know, that this was going to be, what we were putting in, in terms of the common core, was going to be satisfying and rewarding for the kids who might otherwise have had enrichment. I don't know what exactly label to use to describe those kids, the more, the more advanced kids. But I don't know if that's true, and it's not, you know, and I think we ought to, we don't want to, we don't want to short-change those kids, we don't want to fail to meet their needs and risk demotivating them. So I think we ought to look at that, look at math, supplemental math instruction on both ends of the spectrum, and just kind of, that's, so that's a question in part about what we're doing there, and whether we're allocating the money right.
John, if I could ask some questions, and I think we always need to be cautious when we're talking about specific programs in a particular district, because it's very easy to indirectly speak of staff, so I just say that generally.
Yeah, and I have no conscious, I'm not conscious of any particular staff.
But I'm just saying, I think we need to be mindful of that, because commentary, I think, was borderline there. But with that said-
Are you talking, oh, well, okay.
Yeah. But with that said, I want to make sure we're understanding what you're saying, but if you're saying, well, that's a question, and when you're referencing the music addition, to say, take a broader look at performing arts, look at drama, and to take a look at enrichment and the AIS and the parent, or any relationship between the two. I don't want this to seem that you're, you're asking a question that's not being answered. By saying to take a look at, that's pretty open-ended and pretty broad, and I'm not sure that I will walk away from the table tonight, nor will my colleagues, understanding what it means to take a look at something.
Okay. We'll start with performing arts then, which I take to be music and drama, maybe I'm missing something?
It's just, it's not, though, I guess, our drama program sits almost separate. So I just want to be clear- So I just want to be clear, or answer any question.
Okay, fine. And I don't know what, what if any curriculum requirements we have for music, so.
For high school?
Well, for high school or any of the, any of the other schools. And I don't, I don't have any sense of what our, what our goals are for our music program. Our goals, to just offer it out there and, you know, deal with whoever signs up, or do we have particular program goals about what kind of level of achievement or quality we're after, or instruction level, or, you know, those are the sorts of things.
John? Pardon me for interjecting, but isn't, at a, I understand why you're asking that question, but at a budget meeting.
Well, I'm being asked to elaborate, so I don't need to.
I think I was trying to, I don't know if we're possibly getting at the same thing, because I think you're asking questions that I, that I cannot, and my colleagues and I cannot answer within the constraints of the timeframe associated with this. I think we're talking about more holistic and global objectives, and identifying success indicators and goals for our programs holistically across the district.
Okay, fine, fine. But, well, this raises the issue of, you know, are we spending money where we really think we're going to get equality, where it's really going to benefit the quality of instruction or services? And those are the type of questions I think we need to be able to ask in order to answer those sorts, that kind of question. Okay. So, I mean, it kind of makes sense that if we have a huge number of kids taking music and we're to add that, but it's, you know, if we don't have a framework to assess the quality of that, you know, it's, I just find that problematic. And it is an open-ended question, because I don't know how to do that, but I think it's important to figure out a way to do that. Drama, we cut, I think, at one point in this district.
.4.
And we're.
We didn't cut drama, we cut the position, that's why, that's why I just wanted to clarify.
We cut the position and we have a stipended thing, and, you know, it's obviously a much broader issue than budget, but.
We still have the drama position, but we reduced the staff that was delivering it. So drama still exists, but we've reallocated staff, and this predates me, reallocated staff to cover the program, so we don't have dedicated drama staff, so we have staff.
So what are we, stipending staff?
So let me, let me clarify, we actually cut drama about eight years ago from the elementary school. We used to have drama as part of our elementary program.
Elementary.
And that was, that was cut eight years ago.
Right, okay. And that was a teacher, a one?
It was a teacher, it was. And, and we no longer offer drama at Dow's Lane.
And that was K-5 or K-3?
Yes, it was a K-5 program. Subsequently, though, I think what we've talked about so far in this budget is the reduction of .4 drama teacher. We had a part-time .4 drama teacher at the middle school who provided the drama program at a .4 level. We, she left, and we reallocated our music staffing to fill that .4. So we didn't reduce the drama program, we reduced our staff to support the program. Between drama and mu, we really reduced our music program, not our drama program.
Right, right, I understood. And that's kind of where we are now?
Yes.
Okay. Fine. And on the, on the, on the elementary math, up until this year, I'm not sure how to make this clear, up until this year, we had staff in charge of doing enrichment for, I don't know what percentage of the kids, but a substantial percentage of the kids in Dow's Lane and Main Street School, right? And we reallocate, we reallocated that position, I won't mention the name, to, to do something else, right? To, you know, do other math, different sort, a different sort of math support related to the common core, right? So that meant that we no longer had the enrichment program, and I guess my question is, are we, do we remain comfortable that that's, we're effectively addressing the needs of the more advanced students in the math for elementary school? Because that had not been the issue. When that, when that was first implemented, I think, which I think coincided more or less with the beginning of Trail Blazers, and the elimination of the tracking in elementary grades, when that was implemented, it was done in order to meet the needs of those kids. And it, and it did more or less do that, I think. And we've taken it away, and I think I want, I want to know whether it's, whether we're comfortable with that or not. And comfortable in terms of whether it's, it's meeting the needs that we have.
I think we can have a conversation on, on the progress I think we're making with that, I think we could.
But can we also have a conversation about adding it back, and just to understand what it would cost to do that?
Well, she was a 1.0 position.
Right, she'll be adding another 1.0 position.
Yeah, and it may be that we don't need to, it may be, well be that we're not, you know, the, part of the motivation for this was that the new math curriculum and/or standards were, were different enough in their nature that it wasn't felt to be necessary, or at least not as necessary. And so that may still be the case, but I think it's just worth, with the benefit of however much, maybe it's too early to tell this, maybe we need another year, I don't know, but.
And I, I think we can look to have that conversation and look to see what the cost of that would be, but at the same time, I think we have to be mindful that I think, and not, not to talk about individuals either, John, but the idea that a lot of the popularity around that program or service was built around the individual that was delivering it. So I think you have to, it's hard to think that just the program is going to draw the same response that we, that we've had in the past.
Well, the history, the original history of it, as somebody whose family was involved in this, was that there was a lot of, you know, concern about the elimination of tracking and the impact that that would have on the advanced kids, and that this was a way to mitigate that impact. And that was before, I think, anybody knew anything about who would be doing it.
I mean, I guess I'm, as I'm thinking about it, I mean, hearing what John's saying, and I'm wondering if some of the initiatives that we have with technology could help to provide enrichment to some of the kids in such a way that it could potentially bridge that gap between, you know, what was delivered when there was a person dedicated to enrichment versus, you know, what is there now?
So I think we'll come back and revisit it, and I think what's important to say is that we aren't ignoring enrichment, we're looking at finding enrichment opportunities that will be delivered in a different manner. So I think we need to have a conversation on that, and we can articulate that next week.
Yeah, yeah, okay, good. You know, I, I don't have any particularly well-defined views on the PPS issues that others have raised, like the, I mean, can you remember what the?
The teaching assistant.
The crisis T, I mean, I kind of defer, I think we obviously need to be, you know, set the bar high in order to add anybody, so, you know, I kind of leave it, I really feel like, you know, that's not something, I have a lot of information about whether it's worth the money or not. So I won't say anymore about that. I also didn't feel that the justification for the trainer position gave me enough to really feel convinced about it. I thought that the, you know, the concussion management idea wasn't all that clearly fleshed out, so I have my, I don't feel like I, a strong enough case has been made yet for that. It's possible it could be, but I don't feel like it's there, from what I heard. I'm sympathetic to some of the smaller items, like the intramurals, that seem like you could get a lot of benefit for not very much money. I originally thought the track coach sort of fell into that same category, but then I thought, well, you know, wait a minute, this is indoor track, so people aren't all over, right? Where does indoor track happen?
Outside, in the indoor.
Oh, that makes sense. Wait.
Well, you track, but when it's still covered, we're using the new.
And how about the, are there field events in indoor track?
They happen in the gyms, so they're also, you know, the leagues, so that's, basically, probably the gym gear, but I don't really have a lot of that.
Okay, so just to paraphrase, because you want to make, but so they have events in different places, in indoor and then outdoor, and then?
Yeah, so if you maximize the track, we'll have people on the track anyway.
Yeah, yeah, but, okay. So then it kind of, I am, you know, again, sympathetic to those sorts of things, because it does seem like there's a, you know, fair benefit for the cause. That said, I think with, with sports coaches, we need to be careful, because I think there are a lot of teams, we went to, we went to a situation not too many years ago where we, I think with the exception of football, had just a single coach for every team, and we're backing away from that, and I feel like, you know, we want to be, be sure to set the bar high when we're doing that. You know, it's not that it doesn't make sense in some cases, but we want to be equitable about where we're doing it.
I don't think you're comparing apples to apples, because the track teams tend to be very large, like 80 kids, to one coach versus a basketball team of 12 kids forming a coach.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's why those teams tend to need an extra person.
Yeah, and then, as opposed to say, and they have a very big diversity of what they're doing. That's fair, I defer on that, I just think it's, you know, I'm, again, as I said, I'm sympathetic for those reasons, but, anyway. Anything else? No, I think that's it.
One comment, and then I want to make one summary statement, but, you know, the one thing that comes to mind in listening to everybody is, kind of with the new hires, and you know, we come back to this a lot, is how do we measure success, how do we define success? I would love it if there was something we can do over the course of next year to touch base at some of the additions, assuming we pass the budget and we're able to add things, to kind of just, you know, touch, touch base with us as a board and say, here's how the new hire is doing, you know, I don't know, I wish we could put something in place so it's almost automatic, that we'd be able to evaluate how, how we think it's going, and I'm assuming everything, like anything, you know, some things are gonna be good, and some things are gonna need to be tweaked, but it would be nice to have a more formalized system in place, sort of, when those points, that we would talk about it.
Some progress reporting on new initiatives.
Yeah.
So not as much necessarily, which initial concern came up was talking to personnel, talking program success, student success as a result of.
Yeah, and like anything, I'm assuming some things are gonna say, wow, we should do this, this instead, and this will be better, or this is working great, and so, like that to be automatic. And then, my, kind of my wrap-up comment is really more just the audience and the people who are watching, which is, we have three more board meetings before and after the third board meeting, we as a board will adopt a budget that will be put up for vote. So time goes quickly, as we all know, and I just ask, I think, I believe there's a vacation in there, right before the, the board meeting where we adopt is the first Tuesday back after the spring break. So, that said, you know, we as a board really do want to hear what people have to say, any thoughts or comments, thoughts about the tax rate increase, about specific programs that are added or taken out, and, and I just, you know, really urge people to take a hard look, tell your friends, look at the calendar, get involved, because it really is impossible when we end up with a room of 100 people on April 24th, the night we're gonna adopt for the first time, who are saying to us, wow, I want you to think about this. It's, honestly, it's just a little too late. So with that said, I just hope that people keep that in mind, and, you know, we all want to hear your thoughts, but the sooner the better, and the more time it'll give your comments to be processed and discussed and given the attention it needs. And I guess that said, I just want to thank you guys also.
Can I, can I ask one question?
Yeah.
I appreciate all the dialogue and comment, I want to kind of come back to my closing remarks during the presentation. And looking at a target for tax levy increase or budget increase, and Phil, you indicated that you think we're in the ballpark. But then we had conversations about, you know, other potential additions, John introduced the concept of thinking about capital projects a little differently, and then some requests that maybe reinsert some things that I've reduced along the way, and some discussion about a couple of things that could be removed. So am I safe to proceed in our work, as we go through our notes, think about the discussion, that there's things that we want to bring back on the table for other discussion, but we're still in the target range of where the board is comfortable at this point for a tax rate increase?
I'll say my opinion very clearly, that I think being under 4% of their tax rate is desirable, or tax rate increase, and that we have, we would have to have an extraordinarily good reason to go over that. Your budget right now brings us in at 3.94, and so if we add something, I think, you know, this is echoing John just a tad, that if we add something, we should try to subtract something.
I guess I would like to hear from the community.
Tell your friends.
More than me, Ben. But I, I think, given all the things that we're doing, and the fact that we're really looking to move the district forward, we're at a really good place. However, that being said, I'm always mindful about, you know, what this, you know, is higher than I think most people probably expected at the end of last year, when we talked about staying under the cap. And so I just want to be mindful to that, and I'd like to, you know, I think we're in a good place for what we're doing, I just want to make sure that it's something that the community feels comfortable with, and they feel like we can bear this amount at this point. And I also want to weigh that against actually, exactly what John said, which is, it's a good year to actually try to add stuff, because then we'll effectively be able to have a little more leeway if the tax cap comes down really low the next year, and there's a lot of deep cuts we'll have to make. So we'll effectively be able to raise our tax base a little bit to cover us from making cuts in the next year or two. So that's a reason to stay roughly where we are.
And I don't, I guess I don't mean that as a way to try to, you know, game the public or anything like that, I don't want it to sound like that. I think it's a way to, you know, I think we should be adding things if we really think we need to add them for the quality of our education, and, and we need to be really comfortable that the case is strong for each of those items. And I've heard some things where I don't feel I heard that case, and some where it seems like I did, and we all probably have different reactions, and that's, that's fine. You know, I'm looking at the overall numbers, and I'm looking at kind of, we're at the, you know, the budgets, we had budgets in the 50, 50 million range for a number of years, and the last couple of years, we've really gone up, you know, we've gone up from there. And, you know, so I think we, it really is incumbent on us to really feel clear that we can justify these kinds of increases for really improving the quality of our education, or else we shouldn't be having these increases. I'm not comfortable with the size of this increase, but if I feel like we're, it's money wisely spent, I'll vote for it, but I need to feel that, and I, we're not there yet, I think.
The problem is, is that there's such a large base of expense that is tied up in things that we can't easily impact.
I know, but that's, those are commitments we made, and it's money we're choosing to pay our employees, and, you know, that's, you know, that's unfortunate, but it does mean we have less to do other things with. It's not unfortunate for the employees, I mean, they'll get a day.
But I guess, just responding, John, to what you just said, because you're saying you're not happy with where we're at.
Yeah.
So does that mean that you'd be happy if we were at a 4% increase with no other additions?
Well, we are at a, wait.
We're at 4.39 budget to budget.
I would be happier if the number were lower. I would not be happier if we're giving up things that I feel like we really need. You know, it's a trade-off, I can't tell you that there's a magic percent number, it really depends on what we're getting for that money, and that's what I want to hear. And I think where I am, based on what I've heard now, there are things I would take out of what you've proposed, and, and, you know, let's, let's, you know, let's think about them for another year, and maybe put them in next year, like the writing, for example. And, but that's, that's where I, that's where I come at.
Bev, I don't know if you know this number off the top of your head, but knowing you, you probably do. What's the budget to budget increase without the new considerations? So just budget to budget, and also the half a million for special ed costs coming in?
The push-ahead budget, I think, was 3.9.
And then we added special.
Then we had special ed, so.
It's 4%.
It was about 4%.
It was about 4%. So basically?
It was about 4%.
Okay. So we're, yeah.
We're at 4.39.
Right.
Really, yeah.
Yeah, so the 0.39 increase.
Yeah.
Well, we really haven't looked at it since we've got a lot of these numbers. I mean, the push-ahead budget had a lot of things in there that we realized had changed significantly.
We had the push-ahead budget, then we added in the special ed, and that got us to.
But I think the point of comparison was, Phil, the number you had February four in the beginning of the meeting is very comparable to that, I think.
You mean, taking out all the considerations?
It's the 545.
That's the question. What are we taking out? What are we adding in?
That's the additions.
That's what you asked at the beginning?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I just.
That's gonna be the real number that we want to be, as opposed to the other budget, which so many, so many things have changed since then.
Yeah, we.
Right.
Our net additions are 545.
545 is about 1%. Right. Because it's versus a $55 million base.
So it's 3.39?
Okay, I think, I think that concludes the budget discussion for tonight. Thank you, everybody, and to all your members. Our next public meeting will be on Tuesday, March 18th, at 7:30. And the special meeting, right, for the fields on Monday, March 10th as well, at seven o'clock in this room. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.